All right, we'll note that all council members are present. We've asked Councilmember Eric Jensen to lead us in the pledge, and then Councilmember Diana Anderson to offer opening remarks.
My name is Chris Rose.
I am here to lead this pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, Father in heaven, we are very grateful for the opportunity that we have to gather as fellow citizens in Pleasant Grove. We ask that vice chair will be here, that we will learn and understand and share and enlighten each other with the problems, situations, and solvable items that we have in Pleasant Grove. We're grateful for the last week that we were able to share with each other and really feel the heritage and the loving and kind nature of this community. We are grateful for each other and for the blessings that we are in each other's lives. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, are there changes to the agenda? I believe there are.
Well, we have item 9A, which we have noted will be continued to July 7th. There's a public hearing, but we wanted to note that.
So that's automatically going to be moved to July 7th?
Yes. So we've noticed it that way, I believe. Kathy was, when the agenda went out, said...
Oh, yeah.
The note was on there, so I don't know if it actually needs to be action taken by the committee.
Can I ask a question real now? So, that's the first I've seen of any, that being discussed. Have we chosen to put that on there and have that as a discussion, or?
You talked about it a couple of months ago. What it is, is for the appointed officials from Pleasant Grove, so myself and the department head, there's a salary range, that our salaries need to be in that range.
Right.
And so it has to be adopted by the council with the public hearing.
Okay.
We haven't updated it in six years, so we wanted to get that.
So we have to include all three, just because that is part of the elected officers, statutory officers, and appointed officers? Are we discussing all of those, or just one of those?
Um, just the statutory and appointed officers.
Okay.
So you're not doing anything with the elected officials?
Okay.
But the ordinance just states all three.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thanks.
Okay, and then on item 7A, before you come to public right here specifically for item 7A. I understand the council wanted to have further discussion on that in the executive session. So we can either do that right then, or we can move it to the other executive session after we've discussed 11A.
So my recommendation would be is that we do that. We do all the rest of our agenda items, and then have the executive session to discuss that issue. And then if the council wants to take action after that discussion, then something we can do.
Okay.
If the committee gets figured out, then we can put it on next week's, and then invite the committee members that are going to be appointed, or whether we can figure out how you want to roll that out.
We could come out of the executive session to take action if there's agreement.
Uh huh. Yes.
Yeah, because it is noted as an agenda item, so it could be done.
So whoever makes the motion, I'd like to move 7A to 17B.
Okay, can I also make note of that?
Yep.
So anticipating that it was going to say no it was, the people that are interested in 11A are not going to 6:30.
So that's all right then, right?
Well, that's not fast. I just want to make note of that.
We can do staff business on those things.
We can talk about strawberry days.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, we can fill a void with it.
All right. So 7A is going to move to 17B. 9A is automatically continued to July 7. I think that's it. Okay, all entertain a motion.
I made a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the changes. 7A, I've been item 7A, giving it to 17B as part of the executive session to discuss, what's the wording, the...
Professional lawyers.
Professional...
Their professional competence or mental or physical health and individual.
Um, and then also that 9A is, will be taken off the agenda and moved to July 7.
Okay. We have a motion by Sid, second. Second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, open session. Anyone from the public that would like to talk about something that's not a public hearing, or not on the agenda, please come forward and state your name and address, and we'll read it at this time.
Is there anybody else before?
You know, I have something, if you, while you're ready to pull up, and it's in regards to the Strawberry Days Challenge. So this year, we invited members of the community to participate in the Strawberry Days Challenge, which is a challenge where we ask people to attend every Strawberry Days event. There were 30 events, and to take a selfie and post it on the Strawberry Days page or the community page, and just the whole goal in that is to see the community try different things at Strawberry Days. And I was excited this year, because last year, we went to the piping contest for the first time, and this year, my son said, you know, what time is that at? I want to go, and he was excited. And that's the whole point, is to get them to try new things at Strawberry Days, because there's so many fun events, and get people creating new traditions. So with that being said, those, we invited those who completed the challenge to come tonight, and we have an official certificate from the mayor. We want to publicly recognize you, because it was a feat to complete the challenge. It was a lot of time and a lot of work, and a lot of fun to do it. And so come on up, and we will recognize you, and give you a round of applause, because that was, that was an amendment from U.S. community members. First son Jake, her brother Parker.
He's not drunk, right?
Yeah. You were, you were pretty in class, though.
I was pretty in class.
And then I did it, so. Did you have to come get your picture taken? Come on, Sid.
Thank you.
So I worked into every challenge to use their tradition, and I think we're going to, next year, so even if we put maybe 25 out of 30, because it is kind of a lot, now that we've done this for a couple of years, it's a lot, so we're just going to make it a little more easy for the community to pay. But there are still people who went to a lot, and posted, I figured, and it was just a fun way, and I, you know, think my husband did a support, I was gone, I did not complain.
Should we give him one?
You know what, yes.
I'll take one.
I honestly did not, I was not home like a holy, like, my car and the house is still. But he took care of everything while I was out having fun at Strawberry Days, and he went to a lot of stuff. And also, I need to recognize my mom, because she was at Strawberry Days here, and she went to about everything, so if I can give this to my mom as well, so. Amazing that one with the committee, Diana, Eric, and everyone who's participated in Strawberry Days, Dionne, just everyone, it was, it was a great Strawberry Day, so thank you.
Tabitha Swain, right?
My name's Wendy Osborne, and my address is 1212 East 540 North in Spanish Fork, Utah, and I'm with Tabitha Swain.
I am Lillian Kumpf, also with Tabitha Swain. My address is 1519 South 2900 East, Spanish Fork, Utah.
We are here today to ask the city council to consider a textile recycling program in Pleasant Grove to help further our feeding programs throughout Utah County, and hopefully also bringing some programs to Pleasant Grove, so. Sorry, I might go with technology. So, Tabitha Swain has, I should actually introduce Tabitha Swain. We've been around since 2010, and we've been providing food services locally to people in Utah County for five years. We're currently feeding about 4,500 to 5,000 people in Utah County. Oh, it's just going on, okay, let's see. I don't talk that fast. Is that on auto? Come back.
Wait, where's the end? 10?
What?
You had to stop it.
It's on auto.
It's going by itself.
Oh, yeah, okay, just kidding, okay, so I'll talk fast. Okay, so basically textile recycling. The EPA says 5.2% of our land stream, or waste in our land stream is from household textiles, going back. Matter of fact, I can fight it by going back.
Oh.
Huh? There you go.
Maybe it can help us out. Let's see what we can do.
Okay.
I think we're good now, maybe.
Maybe, I just hit back. So.
Some out, then put on automatic slideshow, just.
Like, stop that. That makes sense, I was wondering why it was saying that.
Maybe next time you switch it to.
It said use three, you're first, go back to slideshow. You got it. You got it.
Oh, there you go, yay, I didn't have to talk so fast. Okay, so currently, the city's tipping fees are estimated at $31 per ton. 5.2% of that savings in textile recycling would equal from 2012, I apologize, I don't have the more current numbers, but in 2012, that would have been $15,000, over $15,000 in savings to the city if we collected the 5.2% out of your, out of your landfills by just recycling those materials, so. Wait, I ought to be a little bit closer, this is really far away. Okay, so, so yeah, the savings is a 5.2%. The, oh, it wants to keep fighting me. Okay, we're going to go back, I'll just hit the back button, okay. So the program has no cost to the city, and it's completely insured. The bins are covered under a million dollar liability insurance policy. We have a responsive program, which basically picks up these recycling bins and services them on a weekly basis, and we also have a 24-hour pickup program. So basically making sure that somebody's servicing those bins if a call comes out to us or picked up right away. So we've been in Utah doing this for five years, and we also have a partnership with a recycling company that's been in business for over 100 years, so quite some time doing this. So some great partnerships there with doing this. And then the program is green, and it's good, and it's an effective way to raise funds for a feeding program to meet the needs for people that are in our community that don't have the ability to provide food and services that they need for their families. And it saves our cities' monies, and it's a, it's a, it's a friendly program. It saves, reduces our carbon footprint as well, so. Let's see, if we'll go forward now, we'll see, without going too far. So just really quickly, when people think about textile recycling, and I notice you guys are doing glass recycling, awesome. A lot of people think of glass, aluminum, oh, see, it's just going to keep going. So plastics and all these different things, which is great, but textile recycling actually reduces our carbon footprint even greater than all of those items, so just a quick couple of facts. So 21 billion pounds are being put into our landfills every single year and growing. Recycling textile creates, oh, go back, okay. Every 1,000 pounds generates a day's work for two people. We estimate that 3,000 jobs are being generated in Utah through textile recycling. Only 15% of the textiles in the United States are being recaptured through, for recycling purposes, and so that's a problem. And then every 600 pounds of clothing we collect generates food for a family of four for a week, so pretty fun, all facts and figures. So a little bit about Tabitha Swain, once again, we're founded in 2010. We're privately funded through textile recycling. We began as a local food pantry and providing essential supplies for people in need in our community. Our current nonprofit certificate rating is 99%, which is, if you know anything about certificates for nonprofits, that's hard to get, so. And so, and basically, our program now is that we're collecting food throughout, or, excuse me, clothing throughout Utah County to fund the local feeding program. So our goal is to move these programs throughout Utah County and provide and meet the needs in a really efficient and fun way through our community. So again, we're a little bit different, and we're privately funded. We have dynamic collaboration throughout Utah County. We work with several different relief organizations. We provide clothing certificates, we provide, ooh, go back. Sorry. Okay, there we are. Clothing certificates, we work with WIC, we work with Utah County Jail, we work with, work for services, provide clothing and services for people in need in our community, so reach out to those organizations to help support what they're trying to do. And then a unique program in regards to the feeding and funding initiatives, what we're doing is we're reaching out to other local food pantries who don't have sufficient funding, and want to take these monies from the recycling to go towards those programs. Right now, we have five different programs in Spanish Fork. Three of them are outreach programs that help to benefit people in the community. We have a backpack giveaway. Last year, we gave out 650 brand-new backpacks full of school supplies, free clothing and shoes for children in need. We also have a coat and blanket giveaway, and then a Christmas dinner, where we give out new Christmas toys and provide a community dinner for people. And these programs are all funded through these initiatives, so. So a lot of fun stuff. So how does it work? It's really simple. Our bins are actually four feet by four feet and six feet tall. They are actually heavy-duty steel bins. They've been tested in several different states throughout the United States. They're, they're weatherproof, and they're really heavy-duty, so they withstand winds. I can tell you, out of 2,500 bins that have been placed, there's only been one incident where there was a problem with the bin. A tornado picked up the bin and pushed it into a car, so. Obviously, natural disaster-type stuff, we can't avoid, but those bins have been proven very safe. We've basically placed the bins throughout the community, giving easy access to the public. As you all know, for recycling programs work, the public has to have access to them. It's got to be easy for us to do it, right? We're really busy. And then basically, we go out and we educate the public and citizens, and encourage them to donate their unwanted clothing items. Now, we can, we can actually use single shoes, torn jeans, stained clothes, linens that are worn out, it doesn't matter. We can actually recycle those items and use them to, to fund this program. These items are actually chopped up that are recycled or chopped up and actually reused for things like pet beds, animal, pet toys, building insulation, carpet padding, money. Money's made with recyclable fiber, so there's a lot of different things that are made. Construction paper are made with these items, so. Single shoes are chopped up and made into punching bags. So there's a lot of items, things that can be made with them, so we don't have to discard these, and we can encourage our citizens to do that, and it could be used for feeding people, so. And then the monies that are collected go back to the generating money, or generating funding for the programs that we have, so. And it's just really simple, basically, you approve us to say, yes, we can put our bins in locations, and we provide all the documentation for you regarding the approval of the sites, the insurance, and so forth. So the city would be listed as additionally insured, and then we maintain the bins for your approval. So Lillian's here with me today, because she has a list of seven specific locations that we'd like to see the approval, or would like to see the approval on. But before we go forward with that, I wanted to ask, did you guys have any questions? Oh, just going to keep going.
I have a couple of questions. Where do you have, you have a couple right now, one at Macy's, is there another one in the city?
We actually have 100 bins placed throughout Utah County currently, yeah.
What about any specific Pleasant Grove right now?
Pleasant, okay, you can point it to me.
We actually, I don't think it's placed yet, but we already have consent for the Water Gardens Theater. I will act, and I have one for Stone Gate, which is also the Stepping Stones preschool. I just got their approval today, and I believe, I have a, we have a few other places, like Spectrum Academy is in the process of trying to decide if that's a program that they want to participate in.
So you don't, I thought I saw one at Macy's.
Oh, yes, there is one at Macy's, yes, yes.
So how is the response still on that one?
It's been good, it's been good, yeah. But it takes time, because we've been mostly South County. Most citizens in South County are very familiar with our bins, what to do with them, but it's an education process. Most people don't know, oh, I can do something with a single shoe or a torn shirt. They don't know that, and so there's a process, a little bit of a learning curve, if you will, to let people to know what the bins are for. Most bins will take about three months before people start realizing and noticing the bins are there and start actively using them. We have bins, however, approved in Neefi, Santaquin, Spanish Fork, Provo. We're approved in the school districts as well, and some of these bins are actually filling so much that we're emptying them twice a week, which is awesome, so.
So what happens, the bin gets emptied, and where does it go?
So basically, the, the items from the bins get collected, and they actually go to, we have a contract with a national and international recycling company, so currently, these items are staying locally. Now, as the program continues to grow, they might very well go to other states. There's recycling organizations in Colorado, Arizona, California, and so forth. But right now, they're going to a sorting facility here in Utah. They go through the items and figure out what is wearable and what's not rewearable, and then what's not rewearable then gets graded into different types of materials, and then is recycled, so.
So this is a program just unique to our county right now?
Current, well, yes, yeah. For our program, yes, specifically, yeah.
So do any of the Pleasant Grove kind of like third world countries, or are you not going in that direction?
Ours are not currently, but our partners that we work with do have organizations that do go to third world countries. Yes, they do.
Question, so you go to the business owner, you get approval, and then is that, is there another like, like a permitting process that the city then goes through, or once you get the approval on private property, then you're good to go?
Yeah, that is correct. So basically, what, just to word clear, what we're doing today is actually asking the city permission to place bins on city property. When it's in regards to private property, the property owner reviews it personally, we give them the same actual information we do you, the insurance information and so forth. We ask permission. We do require, as part of the smart organization, it's a national organization that's a bin operator's code contact, which is just ethical practices, basically, which is a permission slip that we have them sign, and would also ask the city to sign saying, we were approved to put these in here. Now, that permission slip does say at any time, for any reason, that you don't feel like these are working for you. We have 72 hours to pick up the bins upon notice, so, but.
And one more question, not that it's all about us, but are any of the monies collected benefiting Pleasant Grove?
Not currently, because Pleasant Grove does not have a food pantry or program. Our goal is, is actually to bring those programs forward. Of course, the items, the clothing has to be collected, and then also to fund those programs. So we have to be collecting clothing and those items to, to bring that money forward.
So there wouldn't have to be an existing food pantry coalition?
No, no, no. I know that the Utah, we're partner with Utah Food Bank, I do know that you guys have a mobile food truck. We would like to encourage organizations, if you have a church organization, or organization that wants to bring a food pantry, we would help to provide those funds to do that, and to help them with the resources to do that. I can tell you that, for example, American Fork has the Jesus Feed Program, and they are really struggling, and they have two volunteers who are trying to make that program work. They desperately need more resources and funding so that they can improve their program. They're feeding, I believe, 50 families out of their facility a month, but they're only able to provide food every other week. The biggest challenge with food services, and I'll kind of give you some information. Utah County has 78,000 individuals that are struggling with food insecurity in Utah County outside of the LDS bishop service program. So there's a large number of people who are in need of help. It's really critical that we have help available to people locally. If you have to drive from Pleasant Grove to get to Spanish Fork to get the help, you've spent a lot of gas or resources to get there. Our goal is to get these resources to the people in your community, and, and, and what I have found is that if you have a facility within your community, people then rally around and have a resource in which to help those people. A lot of times, most people don't even know, how can we help these people? Our goal is to create those programs to do that.
So the more bins, the more locations you can serve, because the more money are going to bring in?
Exactly, exactly.
Another question, other cities that you work with, do they help promote it for you? Or?
Some cities do, and some cities have a policy against that. Some cities have put information in their newsletters, but then, for example, Springville City has a policy that they don't put anything in their newsletters except for what is involved in the city, which is fine. But then we have different things that we do. We go out and talk to city councils, chamber members. We go out and talk to anything from Rotary Clubs, church organizations, and so forth. I'm always out, going out and talking to people, attending events, going to different events, having booths set up, and involved in city days and things like that to create the awareness of what these are for, and people are starting to catch on. So we're getting there, but it's a process, so, but, yeah.
Do you have any programs for maintenance of bins if they're overflowing? Do we have a number to call, so, you know, it doesn't get cleared out for a while if they get vandalized, how is all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, yeah, so basically, every single bin has a information on the front, which has a servicing number attached to it, and the bins actually clearly state exactly what the donations are for and how the monies, or how it's being used, so. So it's very clear on there exactly what the purpose is for, for it, and how they're to be serviced. So once again, we have a GPS program that basically tracks exactly all the bin locations, when the bins have been serviced, so we have records and wait tickets that we have to have anyway to keep track of exactly the servicing of the bins, the waits that are, that are picked up with each of those bins, so we keep that information. And then once again, we have a 24-hour pickup policy, so if we receive a phone call from someone saying, hey, there's something outside this bin, or this bin is full, then we have to pick up from that bin, we have to service that bin within 24 hours, so. I cannot promise you that cities not going to put anything outside of that bin. To do that would be false, but I can tell you that we are very proactive in regards to making sure they're serviced, and I can tell you, with all the different locations that we've had, we've never had a city or any of the schools have any complaints or issues regarding the bins being serviced or the items being picked up.
That would be a good problem, it's filling up, right?
Yes, yes, that's a great problem, yes, exactly, so, so.
Other questions?
Do we see the locations?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, I've actually already scouted throughout your city for possible locations. The first location would be at your community center, which is, I'm sure you know where it's at, but it's 547 South Locust Avenue. There, you guys have, you already have a garbage bin that is in the southwest corner of that parking lot. Ideally, that would probably be a good place to put it, is, you know, by other, either garbage or recycling bins. Discovery Park, which is over with the tennis courts. We were thinking ideally in the east parking lot, over on the side with the tennis courts. That way, it's kind of out of the playground area on that other side of the parking. Manila Creek Park. I know that there's actually two different parking lots around this park in particular. Either parking lot would be fine, either on the north side or over on that west side near that main street. And then over here by the Pleasant Grove Library, and in between that, the other city building there, there's that glass recycling. We're thinking about having one there, that would be perfect, since people are already using that for their other recycling. Mahogany Park, that one is kind of a small park, but there is still enough room in there, maybe over by the bathroom up against the wall, and that way, it doesn't take away from any of the parking. Hill Park, this one, I know on the east side, it's a little, there's not very much parking on that side. That would be a little more ideal, because that seems to be a heavy traffic area with the road there, but the west side would also be ideal down on the lower part of that park. And then also the Veterans Memorial. I believe this is also where the high school students park, right near, on the other side of that.
And there's a pool.
Right, and there's actually, you guys actually have a very small parking stall that's not really a full-size parking stall, that is on the northwest corner of that parking lot. And we're thinking that would be really ideal, since no one could actually use that parking stall, and then it doesn't take away from the busy seasons with the pool.
So like, for example, at the pool, every couple weeks, they lock up their towels and then at... For example, at the pool, every couple weeks, they left over towels and then they just didn't even need to be there. Instead, they could get the towel and put it in the bins.
Yes. Also, with like the high school being there pretty close, you know, at the end of the school year, they always have a lot of leftover jackets and, you know, gym clothes or whatever. That stuff can also be put in the bins.
So do you ever approach the schools about putting these bins on school property?
Currently, I, we have been approaching them, but currently in Alpine, we don't have our official preauthorization through that school district. So we are allowed to approach charter schools in the area. So those are the places that we have been contacting. But we do have, the Provo and the Nevo School District have them in most of their schools.
So now, the money, the money earned goes towards the Spanish Fork food pantry, is that correct?
Actually, the money goes to, first to pay off the money that was borrowed to buy the bins, the investment to pay off the bins. Once the bins are completely paid off, which was a half a million dollar investment, then the monies will start going to the local programs as fast as possible. We anticipate that will be lessening here. So.
And when you say local, since we don't have one in Pleasant Grove, where would it initially go?
Say, local.
Since we don't like having?
Well, first, we actually, our first thing would be to bring the event programs here, which would be like the backpack giveaway, Christmas community dinners and stuff like that. We'll start servicing those type things. We're also researching the idea of also providing a possible food truck where there's hot meals being provided. But we'll look, we'll actively look basically for partners to work with in the community. We basically have different specific areas. For example, we realize Lehigh desperately needs a food pantry. American Fork has one, but they need help. Linden Pleasant Grove area needs a food pantry, a brick and mortar food pantry if possible. If not, we need to try to find, reach out to different church organizations, organizations that can do that. But there's innovative that can do that. In Provo, for example, there's not a need for a food pantry, but there's other needs there that they have that are greater. So we're meeting those particular needs and not worrying about the food pantry side. But.
Any other questions? We're going to go ahead and refer you to staff, to Scott, and let them go ahead and work with you on approval process because there's paperwork and things involved. I think generally, though, the council's supportive. So as long as staff comes back with favorable recommendations, I don't see any reason why we can't do this.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so much for your time.
And how soon will we be able to get the bins once you end up with this, next week or so, how soon will we be able to get the bins?
Probably within two to three weeks at the most timeframe. So it'll be out quick. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. That's a great service.
Molly Andrew, 1125 State Street. I just have one thing, if you know of any scout leaders or, I've contacted the one in my state, I don't know of the one in my new state. I have an Eagle Scout project that needs to be done. It's easy, it's ready to go. They just need to kind of get some donations and some help worked out. So if you could contact me, we're kind of excited to get it going.
Okay, so what do you?
Can you give details?
Do you have a project?
Yes.
And you have?
I need a scout.
You need a scout.
I need a scout.
And you need donations.
Yes, but I think the donations will come and we have a helper who's ready to help with the donations.
Okay. So Dion.
Is that blank enough for you?
Dion has a list of scouts.
Dion has a list of scouts?
I have scouts calling the project.
Oh, I'll call you.
He can actually hook you up with the scout part of this.
Okay. I didn't know quite where to go, but I knew scouts came here.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Hey, anyone else?
I know, I didn't, he looks a little young though.
All right, we're going to go ahead and close the whole session. We're going to move now to item six, which are the consent items. Are there any questions or concerns with the consent agenda items? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve all the consent agenda items as per this.
Okay, motion by Sid, second by Diana, all in favor? All right. Motion carries. All right, as previously mentioned, we're going to move item 7A to 17B. Let's go ahead to item 8A, Melissa Carlehal, just going to update us on the promenade.
Okay, so I'm representing the promenade today and we are a week and two days away from opening day of promenade. So our promenade is every Thursday, starting July 2nd to September 3rd. Our season is going to be 10 days this year. And each week is going to be themed, which is similar to what we did last year. This year, that's something different, is we've redesigned the map. We have maximized the space to allow more of an open feeling for the families to come and bring long chairs and blankets. They are actually going to be between the food vendors and the pavilion and the live entertainment. So it's going to be more of an open space area for families to kind of stay and spend the evening there. And the vendors are now going to line up down Main Street and kind of zigzag where the sidewalk is. So we have the capabilities of about 65 vendors, 15 of which are food vendors, and then we have the rest are non-food vendors. Something new that we're also incorporating this year is a kid zone. And we are going to have kid activities that are going to be on the north side of the pavilion. And we have every week, we have nonprofits and kid zone sponsors that will be there. And so I have a list here. Some of the nonprofits and kid zone sponsors are going to include a Mother and Daughter U.S. Ambassador Queens. American Red Cross is going to come and do food, or excuse me, water, swim safety and fire safety. We have Relay for Life, they are doing a fundraiser here in Utah County. And we also have Tabitha's Way, they will be also doing some nonprofit and kid zone sponsor activities. We have Hope for Utah. We also have Balloon Art. We have Lego Club, they're actually called the First Tech Challengers. They are Lego Robotics Team that is here in Utah, excuse me, Pleasant Grove. And then, let's see, we also have the Heritage Jubilee that will be coming as well as a couple other nonprofits and kid zone sponsors. And I'd like to personally invite the mayor to come back and do a booth again to kind of ask the mayor, be there for the citizens so that they can ask you questions. And, you know, if for any reason you're unavailable, you can have one of the city council members step in your place to kind of be there to represent you during that time. But we would love to have you back and.
Dancing booth?
We're working on that for next year.
Dancing or kissing, what?
We can alternate. We'll figure it out. We'll figure out the logistics once we get a buy-in from Mayor Daniels. So that pretty much is it. Do we have any questions about anything specific regarding the promenade?
It starts July 2nd, 5 to 9?
5 to dark. And so as the season progresses, it gets darker sooner. So that time usually is between 8 and 9 o'clock. But our peak time is 6 to 8, but we do start at 5. So in our different themes, again, we have pulled some of the favorites from last year and then incorporated a few new ones this year. One of our favorites was superheroes and we do plan on having Havik. Last year, superheroes day, Havik was just brought. Like, they said he was five minutes old. They literally got him out of the car and walked him to the stage. And then it was like, here's Havik, we've got to go now. So this year, now a whole year later, he should be trained and ready to give us a great canine demonstration. And we have a couple other ones. We've got our Tropical Nights on July 9th. We're going to have a steel band playing and they, we're going to be passing out laces. So we're asking everybody to come and rock their favorite flip flops and Hawaiian shirts. And some of our other ones, we have Science Day. We have a science center who's bringing their inflatable planetarium again. And that was a huge hit, so we're going to do Science Day again. Then we.
Are you going to have live music every week?
Every week, we're going to have live music. We have either a variety act that will be up on stage, but every day has at least one or two bands that will be playing.
Are you considered karaoke?
That's what our singing competition is for. So we considered having an open mic night and kind of having a variety or talent show, but we found that there would probably be a lot of issues with making sure the material was appropriate. So we just haven't gotten that far yet, but we do have a singing competition. We also have, Classic Car Show is not going to be the end because he was booked, is actually going to be August 13th. And so that's the one. And then we have Night at the Circus. And then we have the Dancing Showcase. So we have quite a few of our repeating themes and then a couple of new ones.
And this will be advertised on the Facebook page every week?
Yes, so since I've taken over the Facebook, we've grown our Facebook likes, almost 200 people have started looking at our Facebook page. So we're incorporating photos and having people ask, you know, what their favorite vendors are, their food vendors, why they love coming to the promenade, taking selfies and photos. I do have some flyers here, so if there are any businesses or anybody who would like to display a photo, it has the days and the themes on there as well. So you can find our Facebook page, it's just PG Promenade, and like it and follow us. And we'll be posting photos and videos throughout the season. Okay? Any other questions?
The Parks guys were talking about getting a brunch ready for you this weekend, so.
Yes, they know their job.
They do have strawberry, strawberry days.
I know.
You have the banners that are going to go up soon.
Yes, so I have a meeting with my staff on Thursday morning, my staff and volunteers, and we will be putting up the banners.
I just had someone asking about the promenade, so I want to make sure that.
Yeah, we usually want to wait until Strawberry Days is cleared out so that there's no confusion. But yeah, those will be going up sometime this week.
Are you asking about the ones over the street?
Yeah, it's kind of like those banner ones that go on.
Those will be up by the end of the week.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, both will.
Thank you.
Maybe we can, there's work to attend to all of them.
Ooh. Selfie.
You work on that.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, we've moved 9A to July 7th. Action item 10A. This is a continued item, it's to consider for adoption ordinance 2015-14, authorizing the mayor to sign a franchise agreement with Siringa.
Siringa.
Siringa, Siringa Network for an exclusive franchise to use the city's rights of, city rights of way to provide telecommunications services to other service providers and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and Council, this item may sound familiar. It was on an agenda about a month or so ago for your consideration and approval. At that point, we had not received executed copies of the agreement back from Siringa. And so the decision was made to continue it until we had executed copies from them. That's why it's back on the agenda. We have received an executed copy. And the copy in the mayor's packet, actually, in case you get confused, mayor, you've already signed it.
Sure. Thank you.
So you don't need to worry about that. But it's basically a pretty straightforward request from them to use our rights of way to install a trunk line. They are not a direct service provider. They will be providing their trunk line services to other providers in the area. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's basically it. And if I remember correctly, it's up 600 West to the Manila, in the Manila school area.
Any questions? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
They don't make the motion that we have done, the events 2015-14, authorizing you to sign a franchise agreement with Siringa Network for an exclusive franchise to use the city rights of way to provide a telecommunications service to other service providers and providing for an effective date.
One second. Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Eric, by voice, Diana?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Jay, or not Jay, Eric?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
See, but I caught it. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 10B, to consider for adoption, a resolution 2015-023, authorizing the mayor to declare a 2002 Ford Explorer as surplus and direct that they be disposed of according to the city's policy of surplus property, disposing of surplus property.
So Joan's not here, okay, I'll take this. The Ford Explorer is something that is not functional for us anymore. And when we do that, we do declare it a surplus. When they are declared surplus, then we take them to an auto auction place and they do an auction for us. And then when it gets sold for, we take the proceeds and put it back into the general fund.
Okay. Any questions?
I've got just kind of a random one. When we have these kinds of surpluses, are we anticipating that they get replaced in the fleet or do we have savings that we achieve in terms of our operations because of the surplusing of this old vehicle or how's that work?
So it kind of depends. I mean, we surplus some old police vehicles that we just had around for a long time. Were functional for us anymore. So we surplus them and then we figure out ways to replace them. So we don't have something permanent that says this is how we're going to replace it. But sometimes we do get new vehicles. And when we do rotate the new vehicles, then the old vehicles do come up for surplus and we do sell them at that time. I can't speak to this one specifically, if whether we got a new vehicle and this is a vehicle now that we're not using anymore, or if this is just a vehicle we've had that we just haven't used for a while. And so we figure we might as well sell it because we just have to sit around. Our, with the police, we have a specific fleet plan, we have a specific fleet plan with the fire department, the public works going, still in progress, trying to, you know, the regular schedule of changing out vehicles. So we just don't end up with broken down stuff. We just replace one or two a year whenever we can. So that's, there is a plan in place, but I can't speak to this one.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
They don't make the motion, the resolution 2015-23, authorizing you to declare a 2002 Ford Explorer as surplus and directing that it be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of surplus property.
And a second. Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana, by voice, Diana?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Now we have a discussion by the council, there's no action to be taken.
There's possible action, mayor, according to the agenda.
Yes, it says items for discussion, no action. And then it says discussion and possible action.
Yes, I'm trying to confuse you, but we did put that language in there because we might need some direction over there.
And before Scott gets started, I am going to refuse myself.
Okay.
Because I believe tonight, we're finally getting the discussion across a little bit more. So I'm going to leave and refuse myself. There are people here from the area and I'm hoping that they will have the opportunity to speak and present a little bit. I just want to thank everybody. One thing I would like to ask, though, is when I do come back, I'm going to text you when I come back, I might look at a strawberry.
Okay.
Strawberry there.
That I could just have a review of the motion, if there is one, and just a recap of a little bit of the discussion and how it fell off.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we.
We go for a ride then?
I'm going for a ride.
So a couple months ago, we met and had a decision from the city council to pursue putting in a sewer line on 4000 North. To a point where we started the design process and started working down that, pursuing that. What we didn't decide that night was who was going to pay for the sewer line, whether the city was going to pay for it, whether the residents were going to pay for it, or if there was going to be some mixture of both the city and the residents participating. Since that time, we had a septic fail on 900 West for a property owner there. And so we started expanding the discussion to consider, do we want to just look at Manila sewer for the whole area? Or do we want to just focus on this kind of street by street? So at that time, and this was probably about two months ago, we took a little bit larger view, we looked at the whole area, the cost to put sewer in the whole area. We looked at the whole area, uh, the cost to put sewer in the whole area is about two point two million dollars. Um, as we, uh, started looking at that, Cindy Boyd arranged for a meeting for us to meet with some of the residents that live on nine hundred west to kind of gauge their temperature on, um, putting the sewer line down that road. Um, and then a subsequent meeting, uh, just recently with the residents on four thousand north to kind of gauge their temperature on whether, um, they, they want a sewer line put in their road. Uh, so it, I think what kind of shook out, particularly when we, after we were done with nine hundred west, was if we're going to do this, uh, to do it all globally and just do all Manila sewer at one time, probably isn't the most feasible way to do it. Because first of all, the city would have to come up with two point two million dollars to front the money, regardless of how it's paid back. Um, and that's, that would probably push us into having to bond or do something like that. So as we looked at it globally, it became a little less palatable. Um, so we kind of went back to taking on individual streets and seeing if there was any momentum to do that. And so that brought us really back to, uh, four thousand north. Uh, that was the, the street we've been working on, um, for the last few years. And, um, we have number, I mean, we have numbers on all of it, but, uh, we do, do have specific numbers on, um, on four thousand north, uh, to a point where, uh, because we know the cost and, and, and now we need to decide how we're going to split that cost. Uh, so in your packet, um, I have put a document in there that, uh, it's actually in the folder, the city council for six twenty-three fifteen in that folder. Um, and it says, uh, four thousand north sewer SSA twenty fifteen. Um, and, and what this is, is the split in costs. So there's a few costs that are going to be incurred, uh, if this sewer line goes in. There's the capital cost of putting in the actual main line, which is three hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars. Uh, that is an engineer's cost estimate. On top of that cost, uh, for the individual property owners, uh, they would need to pay for their lateral, which would, the, uh, once the main line goes in, it will be stepped to the property line. And then it'll be the responsibility of the individual homeowners to get the sewer from their prop, from their home to the property lines. Now, a lateral, depending on where the sewer comes out of your house, uh, could be five thousand dollars, could be fifteen thousand dollars. So we don't know that, and that's going to kind of really depend on each individual as to how much that's going to cost. So when we initially put the numbers together, there was a feeling that, um, if we, if the line went in and we did this through an assessment area, that, uh, the, the cost of the laterals would all be rolled into this. So the laterals would be hooked up to the main line, um, and then that would give the opportunity for the residents to, you know, pay this back over time. The, the, I, I'm not, I, I know that this group has a proposal they want to propose to you, so I'm, they're going to kind of let you know where they're at and kind of what they would like to see happen. Um, so whether there, there's a possibility that they might say, you know what? Let's look at the capital cost and decide that the lateral cost, either we'll just pay cash for that or, uh, we'll just pay it when we decide to hook on whenever that time is. And so, um, regardless of whether, uh, that's money that's fronted and paid back, the lateral would be paid back a hundred percent by the property owner and not by the city, because that is a property owner, uh, cost. Um, but we did include it on here just for numbers purposes, so to give the residents an idea as to if, if, uh, if the money was fronted for this and you were to pay back the city on a ten thousand dollar lateral, this is how much you would pay per month, um, on, on a three percent interest. Uh, so what you have, this document really, um, just takes into account a, a couple of things. One, um, it shows if the property owners paid a hundred percent of the cost, then their monthly payment for twenty years would be a hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy cents. That would just be for the cost of the main line. If, uh, the city paid a hundred percent, then their, uh, capital cost would be zero. Um, and then we have all the percentages in between. So if, if we, if the city paid fifty percent and the resident paid fifty percent, then the residents would be paying seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents per month for twenty years. Um, and that's assuming a three percent interest rate. The city can set whatever interest rate we want. If we wanted to do zero, we could, one, two, three percent, whatever the city chose. We've just chosen three percent as a number to kind of give you a picture as to what that would cost. Right now, we're looking at fourteen connections. We think there's about ten connections right now. Uh, but if people subdivide their property, there could be up to fourteen connections, and so we've divided this by fourteen. So if there is somebody that is going to subdivide their property, they would pay two shares of this. So they would, for each property that they have that's connected, um, they would, they would pay for that. And then on top of the capital cost for the main line, the lateral that will be a hundred percent the responsibility of the resident, there's also the TSSD impact fee, which is about, uh, twenty-four, two thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. And then the Pleasant Grove impact fee, Pleasant Grove City impact fee, which is one thousand and thirty-four dollars. So, uh, on top of that.
Per connection?
Yes, yeah, that'd be per connection.
One time. There's a one time.
That's a one time fee, yep. Uh, so another thirty-five hundred dollars in expense, um, for them to hook on. Uh, so as we've talked about this in the past, we've, we've just have never really gotten to the point to say, okay, as a city, this is what we feel like our contribution should or should not be towards this project. If I, uh, the mayor's asking me today, do you have a recommendation? And, uh, quite honestly, I could argue both ways on this pretty easily, that the city should be the main participant or that the, the resident should be the main participant. There's, uh, I mean, they'll show their presentation that will show, uh, some, uh, statements and comments made twenty years ago by, um, elected officials that, hey, this is something that the city's going to help out with. We do know from the minutes in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, the intent of the city was to put a line in and then charge a, a front foot fee to help offset that cost. Now, it didn't get specific to say how much of that was going to actually go towards, uh, the full cost of putting the line in, except for there is, there would be some buy-in by the residents. A few years ago, ten years or so ago, uh, on one eighty west, we had some residents that wanted sewer and, um, we created an assessment area. The city fronted the money and then they paid, they've been paying us back for ten years. And.
They paid a hundred percent?
They paid a hundred percent. And so there's, uh, and, uh, whenever it was, three years or so ago, um, we had discussed working out a deal with Cedar Hills in which the city would pay them uh, to use the line that's already in four thousand north. And I think the number we had was about a hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, the intent at that time was that the city would just pay that and, uh, and cover that cost. Um, so, uh, a past council, no, that was the discussion. We never got to official action on that. That was, again, uh, just discussion that the city council had had. So, um, I would say, as we've talked about financing or paying for this, we've kind of run the gamut of different ways that this could be done. So, yeah.
I'm not seeing a timeframe on here.
Sorry, this is twenty years.
Okay.
Um, initially, when we were doing all this, we had it under a ten-year, uh, payback. Uh, but as, when we talked with, uh, the consultants that put these assessment areas or helped cities put these assessment areas together, um, they said you can go up to twenty years. And so we've run everything under twenty-year payback. What, if, the, the process, I think at this point is, is a city, uh, we decide, uh, what our participat, participation level is going to be. And then, uh, we can take that back to the residents and say, okay, we can create this assessment area. Here's what your financial cost is going to be. And then we can figure out pretty quick whether they accept that or not. If, if the residents say that's just too much, then my guess is they'll say, don't even bother setting up the assessment area because we're not going to vote for it. So, um, we just stay status quo at that point. If the residents are, are okay, or at least sixty percent of the residents are okay with that, then the assessment area can be set up. The mechanism will be put in place, the city fronts the money, puts the infrastructure in, and then one hundred percent of the residents pay us back.
So the sixty percent is based on acreage?
It's, the city can choose how we want to set that up. Um, right now, we've been using the discussion of per lot. But we could use square footage, we could, the, the state law says, here's four different ways you can determine that. And then I think it also has language in there that says, or whatever else you want to do.
So, but, but twenty, but a long time ago, it was a linear frontage?
Well, so you're talking about the front foot fee, which was the payback.
Creating, yes, I said. The way that you vote to determine whether it is sixty percent of the people is, there's several ways to do that.
And that's, that's part of the discussion. If we get that far down the road where we start creating the assessment area, um, I think we have a discussion with, uh, the neighbors to say, okay, um, you know, here's one way we can do this or, because really the city council determines how we're going to do that. Um, I guess we would want to have a dialogue with those residents to even see what the possibilities are before we, we as a city say, okay, it's going to be this way. Um, because I don't know if it changes much, um, if it's on front foot, if it's on total square footage of lots, if it's just on, you own a lot and you're going to have one hookup, then you get one vote or, you know, however it's going to, you know, set up. So we've been kind of working under the premise of, for each hookup you have, you're going to have one vote. And, and technically, the way the assessment area is set up is the city sets it up and enacts it. And then, uh, if people don't want to participate, then they have a, a right to protest it. And if more than forty percent protested, then it doesn't happen. So they don't actually come in and vote and say yes or no. We set it up, they have a time to protest it. By the time that deadline rolls around, if more than forty percent have said no, then the assessment area does not get created. If, uh, sixty percent or more, uh, don't protest it, then it goes into effect. And then even if a resident on that road does not want to be a part of it, they are a part of it. It, so like I said, one hundred percent of the residents at that point are now, uh, committed financially to do that. And, and the, the way it's done is there's, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a lien that goes on the property to ensure that the city gets their money. So, you know, the assessment goes out, um, they pay the assessments back to the city. If people do not pay the assessment, then we have the lien on the property so that if they ever sell or whatever, we are sure to, uh, get paid back.
So when you say a resident, you're talking property owner?
Property owner, yes. Yes.
Have we heard anything from Cedar Hills since this, since we started doing this?
So not really. Um, after we had our meeting, uh, a couple of months ago, and it was decided that we kind of had our parallel tracks, um, that we were going to pursue putting the line in ourselves as one track. The other track is still working, negotiating with them. I just had a quick discussion with our city manager saying, right now, we're focusing on putting this line in ourselves. But, you know, we'll, we don't want to say, hey, we don't want to engage with you any longer, but we're going to take a little time to pursue this option. So if this option works and we put the line in, we put the line in. If this option doesn't work, um, we can always go back to Cedar Hills and, and, because they've outlined to us what their criteria is to enter into the agreement. Uh, we have not counter proposed. So at that point, we could counter propose and say, here's the criteria that we would like and, and see where it goes.
And what was the dollar figures that, um, we were going to pay Cedar Hills for the legal ability to use?
Yeah, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Well, but their proposal back to us was two hundred and fifty. That's the last thing that was on the table.
Yeah, just so we understand, when we made the initial proposal, now, the initial proposal to Cedar Hills on that a hundred sixty-seven thousand was done, I think, three and a half or four years ago. We re-proposed that, you know, six months ago, and that's when they came back and said, well, we're counter proposing two hundred and fifty thousand. So we're at one sixty-seven, they're at two fifty. But then they also have, uh, these other issues that they want resolved that really don't have anything to do with sewer on four thousand north, um, that they would just like to see happen between the two cities as, as part of this deal. So, uh, before, if you have questions for me, I, I'll, I'll answer them. I think, um, like I said, I believe this group has a proposal they want to share with you. And then if I need to stand back up, uh, to clarify anything, I can do that. Um, but it's, but before we hear from them, if you have anything.
Discussion, or if you want to leave, let's wait until we have, uh, input from the residents. Okay, we're going to open it up now to those that are affected by this. If you want to come up and, and, and when you do come up, please state your name and address for the record. And we'll go ahead and, and take input. Dennis?
Dennis Hollinger, six thirty-seven west, four thousand north. The neighborhood asked that I represent them, uh, in, in this proposal. And so I'm going to read a document, but I think you have those documents.
Okay. Is this the letter?
This is the letter.
Okay, with numbers, numbered items on it?
Right, yes. To the mayor and the city council. As property owners of four thousand north, we are requesting the city of Pleasant Grove to move forward to install the sewer as promised at the time of annexation back in nineteen ninety-eight. The policy declaration that Pleasant Grove adopted at the time of the Manila annexation stated, quote, Pleasant Grove City Sewer System does not exist in the unincorporated area north of eighty-eight hundred north, now twenty-six hundred north. However, the Pleasant Grove Sewer Main exists at three thirty, forty north, thirteen seventy-five west, with a proposal to extend the line north to cover the development between thirty-three hundred north and Burdock Canal. The existing homes using individual septic tanks, in order for services to be provided to the area, proposed in the policy declaration, extension of the existing system will be necessary when development occurs. Serving all the area within the proposed policy declaration doesn't seem to be a problem. Reviewing the past eighteen years and recognizing every effort has been made to work out an interlocal agreement with Cedar Hills, we feel that the time is now to move forward on installing the sewer. We have come together as a neighborhood in discussion, and these are the findings that we've put together. We hope that as you review the city's commitments for the past eighteen years, you will consider these findings. One, in good faith at the time of annexation to Pleasant Grove, we made a commitment to Pleasant Grove residents indefinitely. This was not only the residents on four thousand north, but all the residents north of twenty-six hundred at the time of both annexations, and there were two annexations. Those residents between twenty-six hundred north and the canal and above the canal was the second one. Number two, prior to being annexed to the cit, annexed, the city asked citizens in the area to pay their sewer hookup fee or two hundred and sixty-five dollars in order to show our good faith that we intended to utilize that service. In good faith, the majority of the residents north of twenty-six hundred north paid approximately seventeen thousand fifty dollars. And there's an attachment showing that. Number three, had the city put in the sewer at the same time it was installed in twenty-six hundred north or nine hundred west and Wedgewood, the cost for four thousand north would have been sixty-two thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. The cost is now three hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars. Four, Mayor Sanderson committed to the residents north of the canal the following, quote, "We commit to these people that we would take care of them in their, and treat them like citizens," unquote. See the minutes of Pleasant Grove City, November fourth, nineteen ninety-eight. Five, the second phase was referred, was referenced in the following, bid schedule of values for now sewer extension, four thousand north, sixty-two thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. I don't know where twenty-five cents comes from, but. Six, we as citizens feel very vulnerable and have for many years that at any time Cedar Hills provides services, they'll continue to require boundary adjustments. As stated in their planning document, their goal is to extend their city limits to the canal. Seven, we made the decision, as a large area of this city, we call home north of twenty-six hundred north to annex into Pleasant Grove, anticipating that Pleasant Grove would provide the sewer, which has been done along twenty-six hundred north, nine hundred west and Wedgewood at no cost to the residents. However, there is still four thousand north and other areas still without those services. still without those services. As neighbors of four thousand north, we would like to propose that we pay ten percent of the current cost of three hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars. As neighbors, we live together for twenty years with three percent interest payback, the city fifty thousand eight hundred, or nine hundred seventy-four dollars, which is approximately twelve thousand dollars less than what it would have cost to put in, in nineteen eighty, or nineteen ninety-eight. At the time, the, the installation of the sewer, in twenty-six-hundred north, nine hundred west, and Wedgewood, the residents were required to pay their laterals and impact fees. The city of Pleasant Grove paid for the sewer line one hundred percent. Our laterals at this time will cost approximately ten thousand dollars, and impact fees are now three thousand five hundred nine dollars, which we will be paying along with the ten percent on the sewer line. We commit to Pleasant Grove City that at the time of creating a special assessment area, the residents on four thousand north would negotiate with the city as to whether the cost of the laterals would be included in the SAA, or whether the individual property owners will pay it, for, pay it out of their own pockets at the time they hook up. We find that the precedence and commitment was set forth in nineteen ninety-eight, when we, as a greater part of Pleasant Grove, north of twenty-six-hundred north was annexed into Pleasant Grove. Also, when Pleasant Grove accepted in good faith the money for hookups from the residents north of twenty-six-hundred north. We have also served, paid taxes, volunteered, committed our alliance to Pleasant Grove for some eighteen years now. We ask that you give us the same consideration as was promised to those on twenty-six-hundred north, nine hundred west, and Wedgewood. It was referenced at that time that the residents would be responsible for the foot-front cost, which was never paid by any of the above residents. Beginning with the annexation declaration policy plan, and through the annexation process, including the protest Pleasant Grove City filed against Cedar Hills annexing our area, Pleasant Grove City has repeatedly stated that it could and would provide sewer services in, to this area. The residents of this area have, through no fault of their own, waited eighteen years for the service to be provided. During that eighteen years delay, caught the costs of installing the sewer have risen exponentially. We should not have to bear the cost of that increase solely on our own shoulders. We thank you, and we understand the many, many conversations that have taken place over the years to Cedar Hills to work out an interlocal agreement. However, it's now time to put that behind us, and help us feel that we're no longer vulnerable to Cedar Hills. Thank you.
Couple of questions for you, Dennis. Where did you come up with the ten percent? Where did the group come up with the ten percent that the neighbors would consider paying ten percent of the cost?
There was a breakdown on, on what the cost would be, and it went all the way from a hundred percent down to, to ten percent.
Is this the one Scott was referring to?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So Dennis, they have that in place?
Oh, okay.
Are all ten residents on board with the ten percent?
Pardon?
Are all ten residents on board with ten percent?
Yes.
What did you read here?
The, the meeting that we held, they, they were on board with that.
Okay, another question. Have we verified that our policy declaration made a commitment to install sewer? We have verified that that is the case?
Yeah, so over the last couple of months while this has been percolating, I actually went back through and, and looked at all the old documents. And in the annexation declaration policy plan for the first and second Manila annexation, one of the criteria was you had to state whether or not you could provide those municipal type services. And the city at that point did say that they were willing to provide sewer service out in that area. They acknowledged that it was not currently there, but said that it could be provided, and they would, and they would be willing to provide it. They did say upon development, you know, as development. The other thing I looked at was the boundary commission minutes for, and this gets a little complicated, but Cedar Hills was annexed, was trying to annex the same area, basically. We protested their annexation, and we won. But at the boundary commission hearing, one of the criteria again was, who can provide municipal services to this area? And Pleasant Grove City representatives at the time, Mr. Mills and Mayor Boyd Ash, represented to the county boundary commission, that Pleasant Grove City could and would provide sewer service for that annexation area.
The comment about being provided as development went along, we don't, we don't have hindsight here. In other words, if people aren't around, we don't remember the conversation. But normally, a developer comes in to buy property, when they're going to develop the land, they put in these kind of services for servicing the, the various areas. And if the declaration, annexation said with development, then what is the run here? Why are, why is there a, a sudden need to do the, the installation of the sewer now, as opposed to when there's going to be development? I hope I made that.
You, you did. And, and in my mind, it's cost. You, you've noticed how much it increased since nineteen ninety-eight to today. We could have paid the full amount for what we're paying today. And another eighteen years, it'll be probably more than that again.
Three or four times again. But again, usually a developer will calculate all of that into the value of what they're going to pay for the whole property, and then what they can recover when they develop individual plots and, or, uh, individual parcels, and then individual homes.
The, the property on four thousand north, there's no one property owner that would have a developer come in and develop the property. There's just not that much property on that road. I, I have one additional lot available if, if we were to subdivide. I don't really want to subdivide, but you never know what happens down the road. My kids are all asking me if they can build, so, there, there it goes. But, but as far as subdividing on, on that particular road, there is no property that a developer would, would be willing to come in and subdivide it, because it's not that much.
Okay. And why are we only considering four thousand north? I think something was said earlier.
I think generally, they're the ones that have asked. We haven't been approached by others out there, as far as a, a street of people coming in and saying, we want sewer right now.
So, so there's a, there's a, for me, there's a little bit of a logic concern here. We have a policy declaration for the annexation, in which Pleasant Grove has said they will provide services, and that's eighteen years ago, whatever the timeframe is. But we're talking about an entire area. We're not talking about just one area.
Right. And it was to be done in phases, and four thousand north was the second phase.
Okay. So, what I'm, what I'm getting at here is, why would we leave this to another council in the future to deal with other phases of what's the area that was annexed?
So, the, the way I see this is, we could try to create an assessment area for all of Manila, for all the residents who currently don't have sewer. And we could, you know, divide that cost and, and go in and put that. Right now, four thousand north are really the only residents that have come forward and said, we want sewer. If we were to try to get the whole Manila, that's in my opinion, I don't think we would have sixty percent of the people saying, you know, we want. Well, if the city pays a hundred percent of the cost, then everybody's on board out there. It, it really depends on how much the city's going to pay. If the city pays zero, I don't know if anybody's going to say the sewer line needs to go in. So, and whatever the precedence, if we just take four thousand north and say, we're going to do, we're going to take care of them right now, and figure out what that percentage cost is going to be, we have to keep in the back of our minds that this other, if nine hundred west then approaches us and says, we want a sewer line too, whatever that percentage is, that we settle with four thousand north, we'll likely set the precedent for how we're going to deal with nine hundred west. Now, it could be ten years before they approach the city. If we as a city wanted to be proactive, we could do that. But if, if, if we're going to expect participation from the residents, we need to do that through an assessment area. And whether they participate or not, at that point, it's going to be up to the residents. Like I said, if the city pays a hundred percent of the cost, we could do it all, and we could do the two-point-two-million-dollar bond and just get it knocked out and have it done. But if, if we're going to have the residents pay a portion of that, then it's going to come down to individuals on whether they can afford that, or whether they really want it, or, because, you know, some people have subjects that work just fine out there. If, if they're looking at a bill that's going to be fifteen thousand dollars, I don't know. Some will say, yeah, sign me up, and others will probably say, no, I'm, I'm good with this. I don't know how we force the issue as a city, is what I'm saying.
Counsel, what's your questions?
Nine hundred west is kind of blocked anyway, because it's Cedar Hills Road, right? So it'd be kind of hard to create a special assessment area, and then just proceed up that with knowing the pass was incorrect.
At least today, I mean, again, we don't know ten years from now, or five years from now, but today, the realities of us putting a sewer line in there are probably unlikely, because it would have to be in Cedar Hills Road.
So number seven, no cost to residents. Could you give us that, Ellen?
So when twenty-six-hundred north and nine hundred west and Wedgewood all went in, the city paid a hundred percent of the cost. And when we read the minutes, it says the intent was, is that the city would charge a front foot fee from those residents that are benefiting from that sewer line. And then that money would turn around and go towards helping pay for phase two and three of the project. To our knowledge, that was never collected.
Do you know why, or just never?
I don't know. That was eighteen years ago.
So the bullet points that are the, the numbered items that are mentioned here, have these also been verified, those that are fact-based statements about past activity?
Yes.
Well, I mean, Tina can answer to some. Some of them, I, I think, like number two, I mean, I haven't, they, they've, they've given us the documentation that backs it up, but I haven't looked through it to, to verify the seventeen thousand fifty dollars. I mean, this, a lot of this stuff we could take a look at and get figured out fairly quickly. But most of it is, is actually information we've given them as the city, because we, we have the construction estimate, we, we run the numbers on, if they pay ten percent, this is how much that, what they have represented of the impact fees is correct. When it comes to this idea, did the city commit back in nineteen ninety-eight to put the sewer in? I mean, Tina's given you the explanation as to what was in, in those documents. Did the city ever take official action? I don't, I don't know.
One thing that's not inherent that I recall seeing before is that letter from Mayor Sanderson. Is that in there?
No.
So, yeah, so there was a letter from Mayor Sanderson in nineteen ninety-eight, and if I remember correctly, it was sent out to the residents in that area, for the purpose twofold. Number one, to put, put to rest some of their concerns that we were going to hostilely make them come to Pleasant Grove. And number two, to commit to them that, that we would provide the sewer service at some point. At that point, we were still trying, hopefully, to work out some kind of an interlocal agreement with Cedar Hills. And that's just never, ever come to fruition. So, I, I'm not, I, I don't know, I wish I had my file here. But I do recall there was a letter that was presented earlier from Mayor Sanderson that kind of solidified our promise.
So, so I, I recognize that there are laws in the state of Utah where you cannot bind future councils. I mean, I realize that. But in this case, we're talking about an annexation declaration that's beyond the city of Pleasant Grove. I mean, it went to the county?
Yes.
Did it go to the state?
Yes, it goes to the state.
Go to the state?
While the state.
So there were commitments that were made on, on the part of the city. And this is, honestly, the first time I'm hearing this tonight, that there were, there were commitments made at the time of annexation, that this city would provide services to that area. And you verified that that's the case.
Well, that's one of the criteria that you look at when you are considering annexing a piece of property, is whether or not you can provide those municipal services. And if you can, then you shouldn't be annexing the property, right?
Well, yeah, whether you can provide the services, or you're going to provide the services, which is what, which is the question that we asked earlier. What was the commitment?
Right.
And I think you said that we will provide those services, but it says development takes place.
Right. It said as development takes place. The one thing that it didn't address was, what about the existing residents, right? So typically, we install sewer as new development comes in, they extend the trunk, and they pay for their own laterals as part of their development process. What we've never really, in, in all the documents that I went through, we never really sat down and said, what about the residents who are on septic tanks right now, that live there? They're going to need the sewer, they're not going to be part of new development, how are we going to do that? That's, that was never fleshed out. But on several occasions, the statements were made, we will, we can provide sewer, and we will provide sewer.
Out of the, out of the ten that's out there, Craig, are they, were they already established, or any of the new development out of the ten that we talked about?
They were already homes that were, were in the area.
So, except your son's house?
Except Trent's, I guess.
Trent's.
But he's hooked up somewhere else.
He's the only house.
He went through the Robinson subdivision.
Was there one built west of Cindy's?
Pardon me?
Was there one built west of Cindy's?
Trent's is the only one that's been built.
Only Trent's, okay. And you guys haven't done any, Hollinger's, you haven't put anything on yours. Seems to me like this is no longer an issue to discuss. It's a matter of how much, how much the residents are going to participate, and when are we going to get started? I, it, it turns on this commitment that was made to the state, and to the people, and to the county as part of the declaration. This isn't a, this is no longer a developer coming in and asking for some treatment as a concession to develop. This is, this was party, this was part and parcel to annexing the area. It was an agreement that was struck then, and I think we need to live up to our agreements.
You know, for that, Mayor, this is the, the thing that I, I tried to rattle around in my mind is, I think the initial intent was for the residents to have some buy-in with the trunk, but the nine hundred west and twenty-six-hundred north. No, we never collected on it.
Well, we collected on it commitments, seventeen thousand dollars.
That was the hook-on fee.
But that was their, that was the recommended commitment on them at that point, right?
Well, so, the, the hook-on fee is, if you're going to hook onto the sewer system, outside of the impact fees, there's a hook-on fee for two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Yes.
My understanding that at the time, they were told.
If you pay that.
If you pay this now, then if, if the fee goes up, and we don't put the sewer in for ten years, you don't have, you, you've already committed and paid your two sixty-five. So, so that to me.
Okay, but then the other part of that statement is, is that a twenty-four dollar, twenty-four dollar, um.
A foot?
A foot frontage fee was what they were going to require to pay.
That's right.
That was the estimate. That was the estimate that Frank was giving. In the minutes, he said he estimated it to be that. So they were asked to do the hookup fee and twenty-four dollars a foot frontage.
Yes. So, I guess the way I see it is, I don't know if any time the city was planning on paying a hundred percent of the cost for sewer to go in up there.
Well, it doesn't sound like the residents are expecting some.
That's exactly right. They're proposing to have some buy-in.
They have, they have given a number based upon a, a table that we put in front of them. To me, there's, there seems to be an issue of, there's some technical work that needs to be done to finalize the numbers, to come up with a number that's reasonable and fair for the residents to pay for their sewer. And, and that's an exercise in going through the documents on what was agreed to, and what work has already taken place, and what's been. And, and that's an exercise in going through the documents on what was agreed to and what work has already taken place and what's to pay. But the question about whether or not we should be doing this project, to me, was answered. And, and I think that, that, that would be my advice to the council is, let's move forward. I, I, I think this has gone beyond a discussion about, should we be doing this? I think there was a commitment made, and it's binding.
And to add to that, I think there was already a moment in history where Pleasant Grove was willing to pay $167,000 to Cedar Hills for access to the pipe.
That's correct.
So at one point, we were already willing to pay that.
So, do we need to bring this into a motion? What's our?
What, what we need from the council is, yes, what percent is the city gonna pay?
I, I think that, I, I don't know, 10% is the right number. I, I think what you have in front of you are documents and history that created a pattern for how the negotiation was to work out. And certainly, you can take that information and turn it into a formula, and sit down with the residents, and come up with a fair number that they can buy into, because it's fair. It's not based on, well, we think, you know, you gotta give 50% or whatever. It's based on if you took these numbers and looked at what we were gonna do front foot fee and otherwise, here, here's what it would come out to. And, and make it a reasonable number so that the property owners in the area can move forward, and then the city can take care of its responsibilities. That would be...
I'm not sure I'm following.
So if we make a motion to have the staff take a look at the documentation, and who knows, may come back, if 10% is fair.
Maybe fair, maybe high.
I, I don't know if the doc, so what in the documentation is gonna change?
So, is this everything that we has provided to you as a city, or is this?
It was provided to us, yes.
But Scott, I think when you were saying that you haven't had a chance to see the documentation, that they have provided, that we need to go through, kind of find some comments, sure everything's verified, everything's right, and then we come back, and we are solid on the numbers that we're gonna pay.
Well, so we, we already have all this information. It's already in front of you. It's $382,000 to put the line in. The question is, is how much is the city gonna pay, and how much are the residents gonna pay? What was talked about in 1998, a front foot fee, to me, all that tells us is that there was a, that the city was considering having some buy-in from the residents, but the rest of the news, that number now, I don't think is really relevant. I think as a city, we just say, here's how much we're willing to participate. I, I don't know what numbers we exactly crunch to come up with something that says, "This is what the city should pay."
Then I think we should take that part of the discussion offline out of this meeting, and have a discussion separately about what that number needs to be. And, and it should be based on fairness. We don't know what it is, but we're not gonna divine that number sitting here tonight by pulling one of them in.
So you say, you want us to meet with the residents and say, okay, what's, because they're proposing 10%.
I understand they're proposing 10%. Is that a fair and reasonable amount?
Well, that's, I, to me, that's a question that doesn't necessarily have a number crunching answer to.
So what would we base our decision on as a council? I think, go, go ahead.
The city of Pleasant Grove has made a commitment to the residents in the Manila area. We still abide by and believe in that commitment. The commitment is to make sure that there are services available and every citizen everywhere in the city is treated the same. And so we will make those services available, but never has there been a promise that they would be made available for free. And the understanding based on front foot fees has always been that the residents would pay for them. Now, the residents all over the city pay for their services. They have to. We don't have magic money to pay for sewer lines for people that comes from, every dime that we put towards sewer lines comes from a resident somewhere, from a taxpayer somewhere. And so the commitment that we have made is to provide, to make sure that the sewer services are available, and we still abide by that commitment. We will make sure those sewer services are available, but they have to be paid for. And they need to be paid for. In my mind, any number other than 100% by the residents that will get the benefit is an arbitrary number. The only fair, right number is 100%. The challenge is that that's not realistic for people who live there. You can't pay that much money. It's not remotely realistic, which is why when we had this discussion many, many weeks ago, I proposed that we put together a special assessment area where ultimately, the amount paid per month did not reflect a even division by 20 years of the pro-rata share that would be obligated by various residents, but rather, at the end of 20 years, the remainder that was beyond the ability to pay would be taken as an assessment against the lien on the property to cover the 100% of the cost of the installation. Because that's the only fair number. That's the right way to do it. It's, it's painful. It's the reason, in my view, that it's likely taken 18 years, because nobody wants to put that much money into the sewer lines. But the, but the precedent we have in other parts of the city is that the residents that get a special assessment area pay 100%. We have a few anomalous exceptions, like Wedgewood, that should not have happened. And the intention was to charge a front foot fee that did not get charged. We had former city administrator Frank Mills in here giving testimony to this body a number of weeks ago, and he indicated that there were residents that came in and said, "Yeah, I don't, the septic system's working fine, I don't wanna pay that now, let my children deal with that." And somewhere in the shuffle, those fees were never charged, which is why we never got to phase two, it never got finished, because the phase one people didn't ever pay their portion. But two wrongs don't make a right. In my view, any arbitrary percentage is a burden on taxpayers that's not proper, and we need to ask the residents to decide, is it worth what it costs to have a sewer line? Because we are ready. We are committed. We have made a commitment to provide it, but not to provide it free, to make it available. And we will front it, and I have made proposals of creative ways, which can front more than we normally do, to make sure that it's all manageable financially, and the only costs, in, in my view, it'd be okay to have no cost impact you until the time that the properties are transferred or sold. But in my view, that's the only right and moral way to do it, and that's unfortunate. It's a, it's been a difficult decision. It's why it's taken 18 years to get to where we're at. But I, I empathize. I don't want any resident anywhere in the city feeling vulnerable. I don't want any resident anywhere in the city feeling like, we are not fighting for you and care about you, because we are and we do, and we wanna make sure you have what you need. But we hear every day from residents, or at least I do, hear every day from residents who say, "I paid 100% of mine." I don't think this is at all rational, what's being talked about. How do you pull up a percentage, other than 100%, that's fair? It's not gonna be fair to me. And so we have to balance all those different interests, and we have to do what's right every time. And it's to treat every citizen equally, and to care and fight for every single citizen equally. So that's why my proposal has been on the record, very consistent for a very long time, that we need to solve it. We are willing to put the system in it, but we can't pay the cost as a city. It's not, it's not the responsibility of the rest of the taxpayer residents to put that system in. But we are so committed to making it happen, that we're willing to find ways that are creative to make sure that there's a burden that's delayed to the point where the property, where the windfall value in the property is realized by residents who live in that area, or some solution, so that you can pay for it when it's actually realized as a gain. And so there are ways to do it, but the, the reason it's taken 18 years, in my view, is because of the challenge of figuring out who's gonna pay for it. And, uh, and so to the extent that staff needs a number, I'd see the number that's fair as 100% on the part of the people who get the benefit, who are the residents in that area, which I know is not a popular answer, but I believe it's a principled answer.
You know, all of the residents in the area did pay 100% for their sewer in the form of septic tanks. And, and they've also paid over again for those septic tanks to be replaced and, and drain lines to be put in. So, so there has been an extensive cost in that way as well.
Yeah, no, and I recognize that. I think the question becomes, whose choices, I mean, and their choices sometimes...
Right, there was no sewer, is why there was septic tanks.
I, I have a question. So how did we come up with the $167?
So the, at the time, when we had the cost estimate, it was 352,000, whatever it happened, I think it was 352,000.
So it was just half of that?
Yeah, so we said, "We'll pay half of that as the capital costs to Cedar Hills."
So...
Well, I don't know, but at the time, and again, I wasn't on the council during that discussion, although I was a participant and a little observant of many of those conversations, but I'm not sure that at the time, there was a commitment on the part of the city to pay that, or just to make that the number that would then become a subject of future conversations about contribution, so...
No, I, I believe that was the number we were willing to pay Cedar Hills for, for the use of that sewer. Yeah, that, that was the, that was the...
Was that any reimbursement from the residents in that area?
We discussed reimbursement for that number at all.
And we made that as a buying offer.
Well, we, we made an offer to Cedar Hills, yes.
Did we actually turn the case around?
I think there's some other people that want to see.
There are here. There's some others.
So, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
You can just state your name and address first.
It's the Davies family, and it's 4,583 north, 900 west. And the big question, I just wanted some clarification from Scott, because it seems like that's the road, at the top of that road is the road that's owned by Cedar Hills. So that's a whole nother snafu along with the, the project. And I think most of those guys on that road are pretty happy with their septic tanks, except for the one that blew up. But, um, I just wanted to know, like, are, is it gonna be considered a separate issue now, because of the whole Cedar Hills road? Because it doesn't sound like that's gonna go Pleasant Grove's way, even if they wanted to put sewer in.
So, yeah, if the residents of 900 west want to be considered, then, yeah, we probably need to hear, get a proposal from...
It would be totally separate then.
But you said it was unlikely, even in this meeting, to, that that would, you know, get that service.
Well, there's issues that have to be dealt with Cedar Hills in order for us. We can condemn, we can, there's ways for the city to do that, but it's a little more complicated than just running the lineup for 1,000 north, which is...
Because there already is one, right? So, that we just can't...
Well, I mean, there's sewer lines of both roads that Cedar Hills provides. It's just the complication of putting our sewer line in another city's road.
Right.
And how we can get that accomplished.
So just to clarify, hopefully, a little bit.
You speak in your mic.
Yeah, just, just to clarify a little bit, hopefully, it's, it's very routine for cities to get excavation permits in each other's cities to install utilities. In fact, Cedar Hills and Pleasant Grove have actually done that in the past. We've agreed to allow them to install utilities in our roads, and they've granted us excavation permits to put utilities in their roads as well. The particular problem with 900 west was a very specific issue at the time that we were installing that road, and Cedar Hills did not grant us access. It's not, it's not outside the realm of possibilities that they would grant us an excavation permit with no problems to extend the sewer line that short distance that we would need to extend it. If that was not, if that did not happen, and for some reason, either they failed to grant that, we do have other legal remedies, like condemnation or enmity, to install our utilities in somebody else's road. So it can be done, and it could be simple, but it could be a little more complicated depending on Cedar Hills' willingness to cooperate. Does that help a little?
I think one of the things that I liked is, if you split it up street by street, because I know my parents are quite happy with their septic tank, their neighbor is really, he doesn't wanna do it, he just doesn't want the cost of, he doesn't wanna foot any cost of installing or hooking up to the sewer. So I kind of like the idea of that, you know, if, if they could divide it up more, you know, and I don't know exactly where they stand, it's always an issue that we're talking about, but I just, I feel like I don't want them to get lumped into something if, if they're not really on board with it. So I guess that's the big thing.
So there's something that we need to understand, right? There's, there's 18 years of delay involved in this. If the price was 60 something thousand, whatever it was stated back in 1998, and today, the estimate is 300 and something, then by the time the residents mobilize in another area and finally do decide that they want sewer, there's an exponential rise, again, in the cost of installing that. And, and I think what you're hearing tonight is a recognition on the part, well, at least I've said it, a recognition on the part of this council that, that there's a responsibility here to provide sewer. So the iron's hot, it's time to strike, and if we wait, you may be waiting 18 to 20 years before another council comes around and recognizes the same level of commitment.
Well, but Mayor, part of that is, we've, we've waited for the, 4,000 north has actually approached the city and said, "We wanna do this." We haven't had any other residents really come out specifically and say, "We want sewer on our road." No, if the residents on 900 west wanna put something together and say, "We want a proposal considered for our street too," then we can deal with that as well. At this time, we are treating them as two separate projects. 4,000 north is one project, 900 west is one project. The numbers you have all in front of you are just 4,000 north. There's, there's a separate budget for 900 west, and if the residents say, "We want sewer," then, then we have that to work on, to work off of, to see if we wanna provide that.
But, but we're creating the formula that would work out for all of the residents.
Yeah, so if the city goes 90-10, the city pays 9%, the residents pay 10%, those people on 900 west might look at that and say, "Hey, that works for us. Let's set up an assessment area now for our road too." And we can have two separate assessment areas, and it might even work better that way than lumping both streets into one assessment area. We could do that as well. I mean, part of that is all just on the back end, because I, I really think the crux of the issue is, how much is the city gonna pay, and how much are the residents gonna pay? Because once that number's established, now we have something to take back to the residents where we can specifically say, "Here's what your responsibility's gonna be," and then they have, then they can say, "Yes, or no," at that point.
Okay, was there anyone else from the public that wanted to address the subject?
Dan Stewart, 4611 north, 900 west. One of the things that, one of the considerations that you need to understand is there's an active effort right now to get as many residents on 900 west to annex in the Cedar Hills as soon as possible. The, the mayor has made a number of, I think it's Mayor Daye, I haven't met with him myself, but I've been at extensive meetings in my home, where people would come to my home to explain to me why it's advantageous for me to annex in the Cedar Hills. And frankly, I'm one of those residents that has spent, oh, Dennis mentioned, on a Monday we spent, because Frank, I came to Frank Mills, what year was that? Several different times when my septic systems failed, and I was, I had to do something, just like Gina Daye had to do something. And Frank basically said, "Nope, there's no way we're gonna bring anything up to you." I said, "Really? I'll just let the sewer run down the, down the sidewalk, then you can deal with it as a, as a storm drain, whatever, whatever you're gonna do." I was, I was very negatively impressed with Frank's audacity to cooperate, especially since we had a prior relationship in another area. So I went ahead and spent $15,000 to put in a new septic system and, and additional drain fields. So I'm, I'm at a point now where I've got 450 feet of drain field. It's never gonna fail. It's 24 feet deep. I could build a hotel on my property if I got a permit for it, and I'd, I'd never run out. My, my coming before this, this city council several different times was on behalf of my neighbors. I've got neighbors who have got old systems, and, and because there's a sewer running in front of the road, it seems logical, if you wanna just use logic, it seems logical that a connection could be made if it were offered. And I don't think anybody was ever expecting something for nothing. That wasn't the point. The point was, going back to Pleasant Grove's initial declaration of wanting to, if we were willing to annex in the Pleasant Grove, that we would be part, we'd be available to city services. That was the whole point. And now we've got an adversarial situation going, actually, it's been going on since 1980, what am I talking about? It's not new. You know, their grand scheme is to annex everything down to 2,600 north. Hello, if you didn't already know that. And so every time there's an opportunity for somebody to be offered a free service, all they have to do is annex in. There you go. You're done. And so that's, maybe that's not important to you. I don't know. On behalf of my neighbors, I've been kind of a champion for trying to be part of Pleasant Grove since I moved here from Orem in 1980. I wasn't born here, but this is my adopted home. We lived here 35 years. And just like Dennis said, many of us have participated on committees and councils. I was part of the Manila Township Planning Board. We were trying to work in harmony with Pleasant Grove. That's always our intent. That's always our intent. We weren't lured by, to Spain's offer to come into American Fork, that was never an issue. It was for Cedar Hills, but it wasn't for us. We wanted to be part of Pleasant Grove and that's why we're here tonight. That's why we showed up in city meetings at eleven o'clock at night, waiting for you to get around to our, our item on the agenda. And so, and it's really frustrated me personally that people keep referring to this as Cindy's sewer. Cindy's got nothing to do with this. Cindy's one resident. We've elected her a member of times to represent us, but we're here on behalf of us. And I've got neighbors who are on fixed incomes, who are very, this has turned into a, an emotional turmoil and it should not be. And so Mayor Daniels, I applaud you for recognizing that this should not be a discussion, are we or are we not? That, that's been decided long ago. Now let's just move forward and I applaud this council for having the courage, even though there are, I know there's negative voices out there. I've heard many of them. Some are here tonight to make sure that you don't give anything away. And that's not what we're asking for, we're not asking for a gift, we're just asking for fulfillment of an obligation, that's all.
We understand, I, I believe we understand that. I think what we're trying to do now is give direction to the staff as to how to proceed forward.
Right.
But we're being asked to give a number and we have nothing to base this decision on.
Well, we had a neighborhood meeting and I appreciate Eric and Scott for attending, and Tina as well, for attending that meeting. Unfortunately, there were some things said on behalf of the city at that meeting that were very negatively charged. And people came away with the idea that, "Oh, my gosh, if we created this with Pleasant Grove, they're going to put a lien on our home, uh, they're going to give us a huge tax bill. We'll be, we'll have, we'll have Simon agree at the doorstep to the first ever month wanting to be vending payment and we're on fixed incomes, we can't do that." So, the message we all came away with is, "Hell no, we're not going to do this because we're going to be leveraged, we're all going to be in debtors' prison." And it was a very negative, uh, outcome. And, and the thing I'm trying to, I hope you understand, is at the same time, Mayor Gigi with his own agents is trying like crazy to get people to say, "Forget Pleasant Grove, they're never going to come up here. Do yourself a favor and become a Cedar Hills resident, we'll provide you everything you need."
Sure.
So, that's all I've got to say, thanks for the time.
Mayor, can I just add, uh, Mr. Stewart's comments? We have received two boundary adjustment petitions from, uh, one Gina Day, who has the septic that went out and then heard a joint in the air, can't remember the name, but, um, they have.
Wilsons?
Wilson. So, they've applied for boundary adjustments, um, it's something that, right now, we're, we wanted to kind of get through this first and then we would address that issue, but they have, they have applied for that.
Sir, can I respond to that? A number of, actually, all of our neighbors on our street have been approached by Gina and, of course, she had a compelling interest, I totally get that. She now has the sewer hooked up, it was completed in two days. And fortunately for her, the contractor who agreed to do the job did it for half the quoted cost, which was wonderful. She got hooked up and at half the cost that it was projected to be. And she, she's happy, her, she, her problem's now been solved. But one of the things that she was trying to do at the same time was explain to all the rest of the residents on our street the benefit, we could all be hooked up just like she was. So, just know that, that that's, the decisions that this council makes will impact where residents decide to do.
Right.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
So.
Can I say one more thing on that?
Okay.
So, I live next to Wilsons, who put in the paperwork and also next to Stewart's. But I think for us, we're at the point, it's pretty scary, like, we had that meeting talking about how much we could end up paying versus, yes, you hear, okay, Cedar Hills is going to pay it all. I, we love being in Pleasant Grove, we've always been in it. I see you at the, things at the recreation center that my kids are in, so we love being a part of the community in town. But it is scary to think of, you know, having a lien on your house and all this money versus, she's hooked up now, now she has sewer and doesn't have to worry about it. The rest of us, of course, if our septic tanks keep working, it's not an issue. But if it goes out like hers did, that's.
So, so here's the two-edged sword, and you can sit down if you want, you don't have to say. When a sewer goes in and it's within so many feet of your home, if your septic tank fails, you're required by state law to connect to the sewer. It's no longer your choice. And, and so therefore, whether we put the sewer in or another city puts the sewer in, if that, if that sewer is available to you and your septic tank fails, that's, that's state law. Because otherwise, your sewage is now potentially affecting groundwater and other things to the neighbors around you. So, the, another thing that we should discuss is, uh, the fact that Cedar Hills is or isn't out recruiting should not affect our decision as a council to counter Cedar Hills. We're not, we're not in a place where we're supposed to be out here trying to buy, buy residents or buy loyalty. That's, that's not the purpose either. It, it just goes back to the declaration of annexation. A commitment was made that sewer services would be provided to the residents in Cedar Hills. Now that that's come out and it's been verified, we have a responsibility to take care of this. The question is, how are we going to take care of it and how much money is it going to cost? And frankly, it's, it's less expensive to mobilize once than it is to mobilize four or five times. So, if, if we're looking at a project that encompasses all of Pleasant Grove, you're going to mobilize a contractor to come in once, not come in five times. It just, it just doesn't make sense. So, we're sitting here tonight and, and I think that part of this decision we should make as a council. The decision should be made, we're doing this. The question really comes in is, what is the plan? How much, in what stages, when, how does it get financed? What pieces do the residents or, or, uh, property owners of that area bear? And, and then there's another part of this. The commitment from those property owners cannot be delayed. It has to be signed up for when the decision is made to move forward. Because the rest of the city can't afford to fund a sewer and put it in and then wait for people along that path to decide later if they're going to buy in and pay for it. That can't happen either. So, it kind of has to happen jointly. Dennis, did you want to say a few things?
Sure. Dennis Thane, forty-eight seven Canadian Road. I just wanted to bring up a couple of points just for fun.
Sure.
Then you say that you paid for the sewer when you apparently moved here. But there were a lot of people, I guess in the nineteen forties, when the sewer, sewer was first brought in, that didn't pay for it. And there are a lot of homes in Pleasant Grove, but that is not the case. The city put the sewer in and from that point on, as people developed, then the developers were obligated to, if they were going to extend the sewer or whatever the case may be, they were obligated to do that. And that was part of what their sales price and everything else was. The people that we're talking about here are not developing. I mean, everybody, well, I take that back. I may develop, I've got a lot that I may develop. And if I do, I mean, I don't, it's not a big problem to, to pay extra for that. But the point is, is these guys, none of them are developing. And that is the case when the sewer originally went in. Is that the city paid for the sewer and that's how, I mean, that's how we got it to start with. Individually, if we waited for individuals, we'd probably never have it to start with. The other thing is, is that, another thing you brought up was the price, okay? The price in nineteen sixty-nine, or I'm sorry, the price in, uh, what was it? Eighty-nine, ninety-eight, whatever it was, was sixty-nine thousand dollars. I have never once in eighteen years, and I've been to so many meetings, it's unbelievable, price has never been the problem. The price has never been brought up before. Had the sewer been put in, it, at that time, we would have been looking at sixty-nine thousand dollars. The only thing that has been brought up is this city saying, "Oh, we're going to negotiate with Cedar Hills." And that has never been accomplished. I mean, so the city, and, I mean, not you guys, but the city over the years has wasted a whole lot of time and a whole lot of money by not getting this thing done to start with. And it had, in my opinion, it ought to be done and paid by the city. Because the city has paid for all of the, I mean, all the sewer here except for individual developments that are being, you know, added on to the city. That's all.
Thanks, Dennis. Anyone else? Yeah, let's come back up here for discussion. Council, where are you at on this?
I live in a nineteen twenty-three Buffalo, I didn't pay for my sewer. I would like to say that.
Mayor, can I just add the, and one of the things that you've asked is for us to come up with a way to justify what the participation of the city's going to be. And right now, as we sit, I can't think of a mechanism to do that now. If, if you want us to stew on that a little bit, that is an option for us as a city to figure out a way. The council has something to rest their hat on instead of just picking around a number and saying, "Oh, this is it."
Yeah, I, I'm not envisioning we're going to announce a dollar amount tonight that the residents would go home and say, "Okay, can we do this?" or whatnot. I don't think that's appropriate. I just want to make sure that the council is behind making this project happen. And it's based on the commitment that was, that was part of the declaration of annexation.
The problem, though, Mayor, is I think we all are. I think the point we're at, Mayor, and we've said that for months that we're all, don't mind doing this, Tom. It's a question of the financial history of this one.
Well, I think, I think up until, up until, for me, tonight, it was always a question of the finances. But I don't think it's a question of the finances now. I think now it's, we're going to do this and that's what I'm looking for from the council. Then we can ask the staff to sit down and work on a fair and reasonable, equitable, uh, way for the residents to pay their fair share and for this to take place over time, what the right way to do this would be.
Can I just make one note, and it may not be here nor there, but in the effort to provide some comparison and going back through the historical record, you said you wanted to figure out a fair number of, based on what was represented before. Uh, Ken just got this information from me, the average home on four thousand north has a hundred and fifty-three feet of frontage. So, if we took Frank's estimate, which was just an estimate in the meeting, of twenty-four dollars of front foot, they would be paying three thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars per lot for their sewer. They're proposing to pay ten percent of three thousand eight hundred and.
Three hundred and eighty.
Two thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty-four. And so, they're actually paying a little bit more now than if they would have paid what Frank told them to back then.
Right, that's rough math on the back of an envelope in the meeting.
Right.
And, and I, I get that. What I'm asking for is the staff to actually sit down and look at this and say, "What makes sense?" Dennis has piped in about, you know, they shouldn't pay anything. We've heard this Dennis with the proposal, ten percent. And, and what I'd like to hear from staff is, this is a reasonable thing, but I don't think we're going to work out those numbers while we're sitting here.
Yeah, I think if, uh, we can come up with probably three different proposals back for the council to consider and justifications as to where these numbers come from. The, the reason that, that I struggle a little bit with this is because, um, there is really fifty different ways we could do this. And what the right way is, I don't know. And that's part of why the council probably has a tough decision ahead of them because you, you have to figure out what the right way is. So, but we can give some specifics numbers in front of you to say, "Here's, here's three different ways we can do it and here's the justification as to why."
It's a rational thing to give.
Okay, one, one, that, I would love to see, like, what the mayor was talking about with mobilization, the bigger picture too. So, not just four thousand.
What is that, the two-point-two million?
That's the two-point-two.
That's the two-point-two. But do we have any idea of what the, if, how many of those residents, if there was, uh, um, SSD, I don't know if you guys are calling it that.
SSD.
SSD. Do we have a, a number of, how many of those residents in that whole picture?
We don't, and, and when, when they're alluding to this meeting on nine hundred west when they got scared, it's because I stood up and said, "Here's how much it's going to cost. And if you pay a hundred percent, this is how much it's going to be." That scared people. Said, "If the city pays a hundred percent," then everybody's like, thumbs up, put it in. And so, if we're going to do the two-point-two million and have everybody participate, we have to have a number to go to them to say whether you want to do this or not. Because if I just go and say, "It can be between a hundred and fifty a month and zero," we're not going to get any decision-making from them. So, once the council says, "Here's what we're comfortable with," we can engage every single resident at that point and say, "Should we do this globally and get it all done?" Or we might have one street say, "We're on board" and another street say, "We're good, we're rad."
I am very mindful that the city at one point was very willing to pay a hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
We'll run numbers on that, I think that's a legitimate, uh, way to look at that.
Okay, other comments from the council?
What about taking a look at deducting the cost of septic tank? Because that is different than normal residents would have to pay. And the costs of, and it's going to be different for each resident, if their septic tank failed, how much it costs, whatnot. What about looking at the cost of their septic tank? Because they didn't have a choice and have gone to the sewer at the time, so they'd have to accept the tank, which is different than most residents.
Yeah, we can create a mechanism, I think, that could ballpark that because it's probably different for each individual.
But now it's.
But we could probably figure out a, a number to say, "This is what we assume people have invested in their property for a septic tank."
Because if we are going to treat it one fairly, then we need to treat it one fairly and that will make cities pay, obviously, because our people have not paid for septic tank.
Yeah, because, I don't want to muddy the water, but the other issue, and the mayor alluded to this, is if, if this goes in, are we going to require people to hook on the right way? Because, um, that's going to force a ten thousand dollar cost or fifty, once you add the impact fees, people are going to be out of pocket fifteen grand and that's not even counting the capital portion of this. And so, I don't know how many people are in a position to say, "Okay, this line goes in and maybe we give them two years or three years or whatever to hook on." But, um, you know, if, if we put this in and then nobody really wants to hook on because they don't want to pay the lateral costs or the impact fees, in some ways, we're kind of defeating the purpose of what we're trying to do.
I, I think the details need to be taken offline.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to just go through detail after detail and it's not going to solve tonight's issue.
Yeah, I think that's something we've asked them, asked them too.
Yeah.
I think we need to go back out there and talk.
Yeah, so when we, again, I think when we have the price, then we can have the full discussion of setting up the assessment. But we have some more work to do and we can do that.
Okay, one more.
Sarah, I'm sorry.
One more quick question. How did the annexation conversation start? Was that city originated or was that sewer, I mean, or was that Manila?
Was the township had been formed and.
Manila Township had been formed.
The year after it was formed, the state legislature changed the law, basically outlined townships. So, they were, and I, and I wasn't here then, but from anecdotal stories, there was some pressure being put on that they were going to have to annex into Cedar Hills. They didn't want to be part of Cedar Hills and so they came to the city and said, "Will you annex?"
Okay, so, none of you were, were present back in nineteen ninety-four, but the Utah County Commission called a meeting. It was held on the American Fork Training School Auditorium. We had about, hmm, four to five hundred residents attending. And most of my neighbors, Dave Harvey and all the guys who've been farming forever there, said, "No, we're going to stay in the county." They said, "No, you don't understand, the county wants to, we don't want to be responsible for residents anymore. So, here's a choice, you can either annex in the Pleasant Grove or annex in Cedar Hills, but you can't be in the county anymore. As of this date, we're telling you, you have to decide what you're going to do because we are, we are stepping away from our responsibility to maintain roads in the county and maintain unincorporated areas. So, you cannot any longer be part of unincorporated Utah County." You gotta choose. That's why we came to you. That's why we formed a Manila Township planning. So we had some kind of infrastructure to figure out what to do. We were, we were told by
Was county originated?
The county commission came and told us, all three members were there, and told us, sorry, you can't be in the county anymore. And it was a pretty shocking meeting, and there were some pretty unhappy faces in that meeting. That was nineteen ninety-four.
So Mayor, hold up, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Wait, no, there is no motion.
Wait, now it's make a motion.
You should make a motion.
So I can make the motion that we move forward with the understanding that we are going to walk through the commitment that was decided with the annexation agreement. Is that what it's? And that we have asked staff to research the details and come up with a number that is
Fair.
And fair for both the, the, the people affected by this issue, including the, you know, taxpayers and, and who are not on that road and the entire city, for, for the entire city, and we'll come back and make a scene and.
Anybody's subject tank gonna burst today?
I hope not.
So the only reason I hesitate a little bit is July vacation and family reunion schedule and all that stuff. That's me personally.
Oh, so you want this by next week?
Yeah, I'm not here next week, so yeah, let's do it next week. So we'll put something, I'm hoping by the end of July, if that's okay, that'll give us a few weeks to kind of work through things and, and get something back. But I'll, we'll sit down with Marty and Negan and start working through the, the numbers and Tina.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Wasn't a tie, I didn't get to vote. I vote aye. Thank you for coming. Sorry it's taken eighteen years to recognize the responsibility that we do. We apologize for eighteen years of past councils and everything else. All right. Okay, we're gonna look at the agenda for June thirtieth. All right, item, item seven A is boards, commissions, committee appointments. There's going to be, I think both of them are on. Yeah, we, we have a resignation in the planning commission, because Gary Yates has accepted a job in, is it Ohio?
Ohio.
Ohio, and he's going to need to leave soon. So we're gonna miss him. And then we also have an opening on the Board of Adjustments. And I've interviewed both of these candidates. They've been part of the ongoing staple of candidates that we've been interviewing just for such occasion. Presentations, Matt Millis, Zion's Public Finance, presentation on cities' storm drain impact fee.
Right, so this has been studied and worked on for quite a while, but he's here ready to present some findings and kind of give a recommendation. But this is really just presentation in order to negatively, we need a public hearing. Yeah, so hopefully, depending on how that, that discussion goes, we can, if things go well, we can just set the public hearing.
Good. All right, action items with further discussion. Item A, a public hearing to consider for approval, a final plat for four, four lot subdivision called Jackville Plat B, being approximately one point oh two acres of property located at approximately seven sixty-six east one hundred south in the R one ten zone.
Okay, this is a four lot subdivision. It's fairly simple, just taking the property as shown here, dividing it into four lots, actually kind of redrawing the lot lines between them. So what we have here is both a preliminary and a final plat that is coming forward to you, because of the timing of the review and desires of bringing it forward and checking with Tina that we although it's being reviewed this Thursday by Planning Commission, they will make a recommendation to you and that you will approve both preliminary and final. So.
So that's following Planning Commission action?
Yes.
Any questions? Okay, item nine B, public hearing to consider for approval, a preliminary and final plat for a five lot subdivision called Grove Creek Commercial Center Subdivision, being approximately two point two acres located at approximately twenty-one sixty-eight west Grove Parkway in the Grove Zone Interchange Subdistrict.
Okay, almost a couple of years ago, or I guess it was more than a couple of years ago, the city council did approve this plat. But it was never recorded, and the site plan itself was also approved, but nothing was built. So both of those have expired, so they're both coming back to you for reapproval on these. There's nothing substantially changed, so what we're looking at here is this property where the Horrocks building is, and then what formerly was University of Phoenix, there's a property in between that a building is being planned. And so what this right now is, is the subdivision plat that will divide up this property, showing it in the interchange sub district of a Grove Zone. It will divide up that area into the five lots, one, two, three, four, five. And then a, a future, a later item will be specifically on this property here, the site plan on that. It's otherwise been planned, approved, reviewed, it's all ready to go, it's just it all expired, so I need approval.
Any questions? Yeah?
Do we get to ask who it is?
No.
Okay, item nine C is a public hearing to consider for adoption ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twenty-three to rezone one acre of land, sorry, from the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Subdistrict to the Grove Zone Mixed Housing Subdistrict on property located at approximately one hundred south thirteen hundred west in the Grove Zone.
Okay, this is a request by John Har, and he has this one acre piece, which actually is a part of the larger area of his property. You've got, we, we recently approved the, the site plan for the Garden Grove Mixed Use, Mixed Housing Development right here, thirteen hundred west and one hundred south. The future extension of one hundred south comes right along here and then cuts right through John Har's property to connect over here onto two twenty south that exists. So he's got this triangular piece plus this long narrow strip that's right there. Now, he's been trying to determine how he might best utilize that narrow strip of property, and it is his desire to be able to use that for multifamily housing. Now currently, multifamily housing is surrounding that property, except for on the, the south and the, and the east edge there. But he would like to be able to utilize this for up to, I think, approximately eight condos that would fit on that property. So he would, he's requesting that it be changed, unchanged to mixed housing. It's, I think it's a maximum eighty feet. So we have some difficulties in being able to put much of a building in there, meeting the setbacks for both front and rear and allowing for parking, and so we, we have looked at it for, it, it is possible that you could do some smaller office buildings there, about the same footprint as the condos would be. But he feels that his options are better with approximately eight condominiums, three story on that location, so he's requesting this change.
Has that been to Planning Commission?
It actually has. I was thinking that we were bringing it back, that it has received a positive recommendation from the planning commission.
Any questions?
I can do that one. Is that a question from your property?
Yes.
It is on the left.
It's right here.
Yes. Well, I believe it impacts that issue.
Okay, item nine D, public hearing to consider for adoption ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twenty-four, amending the Pleasant Grove City Code, section ten dash fourteen dash twenty-four dash three dash E, to remove the requirement for drive aisles dividing parking areas of one hundred spaces, fifty-five thousand square feet or more, and to remove the requirement to install a six-foot sidewalk along the sides of in, internal drive lanes. Applicant is Daniel Thomas.
Okay, so Daniel Thomas with St. John's Properties has been preparing site plans for submittal for his proposed project there on Pleasant Grove Boulevard, and came up with some difficulties in trying to meet this requirement, which as we reviewed the code, the, the requirement to have drive aisles that break up so many parking stalls in a, a parking lot is found only in the interchange sub district of the Grove Zone. It's not part of the mixed housing or the commercial sales or any other commercial zone that we have in the community. So not having the history of why that particular requirement was put in here, staff determined that, well, this might be a supportable request to, to remove this. So I'll show you in practice how this is going to work with their proposal. What you have here, Pleasant Grove Boulevard, you've got the freeway going across over here, Granite Way, that would come up to the Horrocks building over in this area. So what it requires is breaking up this parking lot here. Now, this is not ultimately, I think, what they're going to be coming up with in their final parking lot, but it, it would require that this be broken up with a drive lane and not just, or a drive aisle, not just a drive lane like you would see between parking stalls, but something like you see here over on the edge that acts more like a street, an inner street, that requires curb gutter sidewalk type thing. So it would require that through here. So by doing that, it takes out a substantial area of the parking. We don't require that, as I say, in any other sub district or zone in the city. And we feel like the parking area and through here, broken up by, and this again is not a final version, but it would be broken up by tree diamonds and such, is not excessive in its size, that it would require this type of a drive lane or drive aisle breaking it up. So it, it is a request that we remove that requirement from the interchange sub district.
Okay? Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions on that. I mean, it seems like there's value in the drive lanes if you have an accident somewhere in there, if you don't have some breakup at some point in the area where we're going to have presumably our largest commercial or largest parking lots, the most spaces are.
Well, again, this isn't final, but let me show you the way this is doing it. It's showing, unfortunately, the, the blue and the red are kind of distracting a little bit here. But this, this is actually a drive lane that comes in through here. This is a drive lane, this is drive lane. So it actually goes all the way around that, and these would be, or drive aisles, but these would be, I'm sorry, the, the terminology can be confusing, but a, a parking lane or a drive aisle. The, these are just kind of in the middle here, but you've got the ability to go completely around. Now, I understand, I don't think it's final, but we did receive an, an email from Daniel that they have permission to be able to access this, this area as a ride-in, ride-out.
They don't, they don't have permission, but in their findings with UDOT, they found out that at least what they've been able to look at is that UDOT does not have unlimited access. They have not purchased unlimited access from Dennis Baker. So at this point, they are proceeding as if they are allowed to have that. And if UDOT challenges it, we'll find that down a little bit later down the road.
Boom.
I just don't get too excited yet.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That being the case, their site plan will change, and this actually will become a, a drive aisle that will connect to that roundabout. Without having that access, it didn't make sense for them to have to, to do that there.
I was wondering primarily if staff, there's an auto accident offender bender right here in the middle of this. The longer this road becomes, the more traffic it impacts if they have to go. So, so I see value in periodic breaking up of these long, long rows of parking stalls. And so I'm wondering if staff can recommend some principled alternative rather than just getting rid of this requirement, maybe saying, for the sake of this plan, which may change, but in, if the ride-in, ride-out is not granted, they need this requirement is written, it's too restrictive, but maybe we should have some requirement that period out that you can't have ten thousand stalls in a row with no interruption. Right? I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, well, and, and like I say, this would, this requirement does apply in this particular sub district, but we have such as the DoTERRA parking lot, if you've been through there. It is a fairly lengthy lane between parking stalls that seems to work now. I think, you know, yeah, there, there might be that concern. I don't know that access necessarily is prohibitive or, or problematic. When, it's just, yeah, it takes maybe a little bit longer to get to it, but I don't know that it's necessarily a problem.
I guess that's just requesting a more thorough analysis when we get to the possibilities, because I, I, I would be inclined rather than eliminating the requirement to come up with a different number that actually does anticipate some limit on how long a row of parking stalls would go.
And we could look at that with proposed verbiage. That's not that, this time the request is coming forward to you, but if you wanted to send it back or whatever.
Maybe something that would be helpful to visualize would be, so how many cars is that and what does it look like? So if you included a picture, that would be helpful, at least for me to be able to see. Because like right now, I don't have any idea of how many stalls that is. Is that fifty in a row?
Probably have about thirty or so.
Total in the whole parking lot, so.
Yeah, if you've driven out in the DoTERRA parking lot, that'll give you an idea of what we're talking about.
So that is equal to that?
Well, it's not equal, but it's similar.
Other comments? Okay. Item nine D is a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed Pleasant Grove City fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen budget amendment. That's this one?
Yeah, so I put a document there. This is on our website already as well, for anyone who's interested in looking at it. It's just a, so this is dealing with the year we're in, two thousand fifteen year, just some final budget amendments. It's all right, I'll go through about the first five here. Everything else is kind of one type of thing, and I'll describe that when I get there. And I think all of these things we've talked about before. The first two deal with, with the Shannon's Fields project. Obviously, we had a lot of discussion on that last winter, and we moved ahead on the, on the contract. And I had to enter this budget entry into our, our accounting system, but as I was reviewing my records, I didn't see where we'd actually brought this as a budget amendment to the council. So that's what those are, and that's why there's two line items. The first one is the parking impact fee part, and the second is what was funded through the sale of that property. Number three, and we've had a discussion a couple of months ago about the requirement or direction from the state authorities office that our general fund pay the utility funds for the utilities that it's used. And if you remember, we implemented a franchise fee a couple of months ago at the same time to kind of make that revenue neutral. So this is just putting that in the budget as we, as we've done it. Number four is, is thirty-five thousand dollars related to the TSSD litigation that we're involved with, who had some bills with them. Number five is just with the, with all, most of our arts programs, specifically they, they use theater. You know, most, their money all comes through tuition and, and ticket sales. So we kind of have given a revenue budget for that and an expense budget for that. They brought in eight thousand dollars more than they'd budgeted, so this is just allowing them to, to spend that. Everything else on here, six through twenty-three, I won't go over unless you want to. These are all items where you either receive the grant or a donation, or I think in one case it was, like when the fire department spent a CPR class and there's a small fee that allows them to use that money to buy the supplies. and they did a small fee that allows them to use that money to buy the supplies to teach the class. So all of those are just related to those types of things. I'd have to go over any of them if you want, I'll go over all of them, but I think the explanation that's in here kind of just explains what they're for.
How does we do on projected cost of Shannon's Fields and actual cost?
Well, it's still in progress of being built, so I don't know that that's known yet.
Do we include how, of course, and then we're claiming that that's another thing?
I have a request, and maybe we could take care of this today, but I did notice the increase in legal fees associated with TSSD litigation, both on our paid vouchers and in this proposal. And it's been a while since I've had a formal update. I don't know if we could do that on executive session tonight, or, but I'd like to know where we are and what developments have occurred in my litigation.
Yes, we could do that.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions for Dean? It will be a public hearing, so the public will have an opportunity to comment as well. All right. Item ten A, to consider for adoption, a resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero two four, adopting the amended two thousand fourteen fifteen budget and providing for an effective date. The amended budget?
Yeah.
That's the resolution in there.
Item ten B, to consider for approval, the two-lot subdivision called Bella Grace on property located at approximately twenty-four east one hundred north in a downtown village zone, mixed-use overlay.
Okay, Steve Alred is under contract to sell his project, and it's with a company called Lotus, and they are anxious to get started. And so what they have proposed to do is this, we have already approved a site plan and a plat for this property, but they would like to, for financing purposes, divide it up differently. So on the main street side, we've got the four units facing Main Street that will have commercial on the bottom floor. The rest, they did do a site plan amendment recently at planning commission, which took out the ability for these condos here that will face on one hundred north to have a commercial on the bottom floor, so it's strictly residential. This whole lot two area will be strictly residential. This will have a commercial component. So because of financing purposes, they want to divide up the property in this manner. The whole project will be built simultaneously. They would like to break ground in July.
What kind of development, like is it retail office?
Just smaller ability to do, it's probably going to end up being offices, but there could be retail as well. Because of its distance from the other retail on Main Street, it might be difficult to do retail in that location at this time. However, the master plan is that we have four more units down here below it that will kind of tie in the whole avenue of shopping there. So there's a future possibility for that. Not say it won't happen now, but I would guess it might lend itself better to an office at this time.
So at one stage, there was retail along Center Street. Is that not being, remember how it was first?
On Center Street?
On Center Street.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a master plan that would call for that. There's not any proposed development to do any further, except for the Thai House restaurant.
This starts behind the Thai House, so it's not flush with.
Yeah, this is just the north part of Main Street and Hundred North.
The north side.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, item ten C, to consider site plan approval for the Grove Creek Two Professional Office Building on two point two-two acres located at approximately twenty-one sixty-eight west Grove Parkway in the Grove Zone interchange subdistrict.
With the public hearing being held, the planning commission is not required for a public hearing at city council, but it does require your approval. So again, we're back over here. It includes this area where the building will be built as well as this designated parking area, dividing up the parking needs for each building. And that had been several years ago when we determined that. So the site plan, although the parking has already been developed there, that includes that property. But what actually the site plan is approving at this time is the actual construction of the building, some of the parking around it, and a little bit of landscaping out in front. So it's very simple, it's already been approved once, just need reapproval.
Any questions? All right. Item ten D, to consider for adoption and ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twenty-five, amending Title V, Section one D, subsection seven, quote, restrained by owner, unquote, requiring animals to be restrained at all times and providing for an effective date.
So this order amendment was brought forward at the request of a resident who found the previous ordinance a little bit unclear with regard to actual control over animals. Previous language allowed animals to be either restrained or under the direct supervision of their owners. There have been, there has at least one incident that occurred on the run-up trail where a dog was not restrained, but the owner was close by. And still something happened, and so at the request of the city council to make an amendment to clarify that, that's what this is.
So is this throughout the whole city?
Yes.
Okay. So how, is that even the Manella Pond, but a lot of wood? So that means that dogs at the Manella Pond have to be on meat?
They already should, shouldn't they?
Actually, there's dogs on the block. That one's, that one's.
In the pond or at the park?
In the park.
Yeah, right. So, so since that's not a reality, we need to, we need to, I think I've said this before, the signs that tell you the rules at Manella Creek Pond are in where the bathrooms are. And nobody is, you know, nobody's going to walk in, read the signs, unless we have something around that area that is at least something like no dogs allowed. Just short, I don't think we need to post all of the rules throughout everywhere, but that park is being abused. So, and no flotation devices, all of that kind of stuff. I think we've got to have some signage that's not just under that roof of that building, because nobody walks in there and goes, oh, I wonder what the rules are. You know what I mean? It's got, it's gotta be other places. And I don't know who enforces that or not, but I just see a really, really, there was somebody there the other day on a waveboard. What do you call them?
Power board.
Multiple flotation device, multiple dogs everywhere. I mean, just bringing that right up. We need to figure it out.
Looking at that, yep.
More signage enforcement.
Okay. Any other discussion on that item? All right, we're back to tonight's agenda. You were in staff business, Libby, do you have anything?
Just hoping for a chair.
What, who would have a chair? Who was there?
Elaine Bond.
A name that's submitted? Okay.
It's been strawberry day, so.
Okay.
So hopefully before the first of July.
All right, anything else?
No.
Ken?
Just to mark your calendars, August tenth, we've got the city employees' summer party scheduled. We're going to be using the DoTERRA patio. How we use an entertainment.
Wow, that sounds good.
Let me in charge and I'll do it right.
Wednesday, so Wednesday, Ken?
What is it?
Six thirty. We'll be sending out email reminders.
Anything else? Okay. David?
Just a couple of updates. Reminder of the Aroma Tools ribbon cutting tomorrow morning at ten AM. If you have that on your calendar, that will be a great event. Also, the Chamber Annual Magazine, which is just a community resource guide essentially, has been published this year, so it'll be mailed out to everybody in the city as well as Cedar Hills, Alpine Island, and American Fork. But the mayor's message is already received some compliments, so you may want to go look at it. That's a good thing. I'll see that happen next week, that's my information.
Okay, I see a trend coming in here. We'll see if it holds. Anything else? Dion?
I'll be here next week.
Marty, welcome.
Good to be here.
Nice to have you here.
My first one officially, I guess. And I'll be here next week.
Many advice for us?
Noah, all I can say is through my first week, I thoroughly enjoyed working with the gentleman down there at Public Works. Talk about a good group of guys. They work hard, we had a couple of guys working through the weekend to keep a couple wells going, to keep everybody in water during Strawberry Days. Impressive to see their commitment to the city and doing all we can to keep those things going. So that's a great thing for me anyways, coming from the other side of things, seeing how hard these guys are working and the commitment they're making to the city. So I appreciated seeing that through this first week. I'm sure there's more that I'll see from that. One other thing that we're kind of seeing, we've had, obviously, water is a big issue of keeping the water, the system with water and the pressure irrigation system. We have an issue because of the way the system is set up. Sometimes of what, too much draw, too much water being used during the nighttime, and then we have this lull over the daytime. And ideally, with conservation, we're focusing on not using it during the day, because you do get a little bit of additional evaporation of that water. It's not as effective sometimes. However, I think with our current system, we're going to have to see a little bit of that. So don't be too surprised, I don't think that that's been something that we've pushed of saying you can't water during the day. However, we're going to probably try to do a little bit more of that, because right now, especially with odd temperatures, we're seeing a really, a lot of demand overnight times, and we're having a hard time feeding that demand. And so we're going to be encouraged, maybe some of the parks, to try to water a little bit during the day to take off some of that nighttime demand for our system. And it's not typical, you're going to hear throughout the news, don't do this, don't do this. But for our system to be able to operate efficiently, we're going to have to do a little bit of that, or else we're going to have other problems in the system. And so be aware of that, council mayor, if you hear that, we'll deal with it as much as we can. We're going to operate it the most efficiently as we can. Our water is valuable, and it's difficult to keep that all the way through the end of the season is going to be our goal. And so, but those are a couple of things that have come up this week, so.
Okay. Maybe you could put something in the online system so people are aware in case they have questions and they look it up, then they can see what's going on.
On our written materials right now, we do let people know it's okay to water during the day. On our water restriction FAQ, it states that. In other areas, we notice that. So we don't have a ton of people that do it, but we do tell them it's okay to water during the day.
Okay. And were you joking, or you are going to be gone next week?
He's going to be gone for a long time.
Sorry, I'll be gone for two weeks. And I did need a break between my JV job and this job, but didn't get one, so I... I'm sorry that I will be leaving for a couple of weeks, but it'll be a much appreciated vacation for my family, so. Then we'll get back at it.
Dave? Nothing? Mike?
Sherry not here? She's a trainee.
Just a comment, everybody, staff-wise, you guys did excellent this week with Strawberry Days. I know you, I mean, built a concession stand with overnight, and the paramedics and the PD were out there, you didn't sound like it night. Just amazing. It's just really awesome to see everybody.
And the guns and hoses, that was.
First runner came in like fourteen minutes or so. What was it, three? Fourteen? Yeah, I think he was around fourteen minutes of first runner. I thought maybe he just turned around in a mile. I think he honestly ran the whole three miles.
I think he honestly ran.
Dean? Scott? Tina?
I will be here next week.
And he'll be gone.
There's nobody coming next week, it's something that I'm missing.
A lot of people are out. Dan?
Nothing, but I'll be here next week.
Nothing?
I'll be here Tuesday, so you can call me.
Okay.
Strawberry Days was awesome. I stopped at twenty-four events just to make the city feel good.
Good for you. Dion?
I will not be here next week. And we have a, I don't know, I think you mentioned the protect and preserve the racquet fork. But we have a situation that we need to, I don't know what our role as a city is in that conversation. I know it's a county conversation, I know that it's, that there are some mayors in Salt Lake that have been much more aware of it, Utah County probably in the last two weeks. But Snowbird wants to come up over and end up in Mellow Basin and come to a fork on. So I would love to know what our role as a city is in that process.
So we just, we just recently assigned Dion to represent us initially, to go gather that information and let us know as a council what our role is as a city. I do know that Mayor Gee has been involved from Cedar Hills, but I think his word is sponsoring legislation to get money to do a study on developing American Fork Canyon. And most of the emails that I've received in the last two weeks have been against any form of development in the canyon. So I think that we're going to let.
That's what I'm receiving.
Yeah. We're going to let Dion kind of help us with this and gather the information and come back to those.
They'll be in. So I do have a group, Willie Holdman, famous photographer. He has a group and he would love to come make a presentation. But there, I guess the vote is July eleventh, so we don't have very much time.
Well, that's the vote on the Salt Lake people. Their, their, their group is voting, and they're being asked to delay their vote. But their vote doesn't apply in UDOT County as far as what it does.
Okay, so and I was understanding that that was the approval of the land swap, the four hundred and sixteen acres.
And one of the issues is apparently Snowbird's been at this for a while, because they already own acreage of the canyon. We were shown a map in Midway a couple of weeks ago, where they've purchased a whole ton of land. And the swap, I wasn't aware of that until it started coming out in the last two weeks, so. Dion, are you any, have you had any time at all with Strawberry Days to look into this?
The only thing that I've really found out in conversation with the Forest Service is that Snowbird wants to develop this area. Their field and their direction that they're taking now is to do a study on the canyon itself before they even entertain any type of cell of property. And that's where everybody's starting to get involved and, you know. So I understand there's not a vote in the near future to trade that property, that swap of land, because the Forest Service wants to do a pretty intense study on what the project feels they want the outcome of American Fork Canyon to be. So there's surveys online, if you go to AFC Vision, you can fill out a survey online there. Pretty basic questions, takes about ten minutes. But I haven't attended any meetings yet, and they keep delaying the meeting. We had one set up, I believe it was for yesterday, and they've moved it, and then they canceled that one. And so I'm just waiting to attend the meeting to get a little more information.
So, I mean, I realize it's catching everybody flat-footed, but I think that either it's by design or by accident, it's one of the elements. So as soon as Dion gets his arms wrapped around this hill, let us know. Anything else? Ben?
I will be here next week.
Sid?
I'll be here next week, and just thank you again for a great Strawberry Days.
Cindy?
And I will be here next week. I guess I'm meant to say that now, I must have missed the memo. Can I get a review of what you placed?
Yes. The, we heard from the citizens that the landowners in the area, and we also heard some research from Tina where in, in the declaration of annexation, the city of Pleasant Grove made a commitment to provide services to that area that was annexed. And so, on the motion from Council member Lamone, we have moved forward to back that up. We're going to provide those services, and the question now is, how much money are the citizens or the landowners in the area going to be asked to pay? And how much will the city pay? And what are the terms of that? And we decided to take that offline, because how do you come up with that?
No, exactly.
So, I think that's a summary, unless anybody wants to add. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you very much for that open discussion.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. No plats? Calendar-wise? How July's calendar? We were talking, Scott and I were talking earlier today about how we seem to have migrated to every week is a council meeting. And we're wondering if there's a possibility for us to get back to less than every week being a council meeting. And so, we're going to propose in the next little while that we cut back one meeting a month, and then see how that goes, and then maybe go like other cities do where it's every other week, if we can get there. One of the reasons we, we came down this path of having a council meeting every week is there was so much business to take care of, that when we would have it every other week, we ended up being till midnight every night, and that just seemed impractical. As you can see tonight, it's almost nine and we're about at the end of the formal part of the agenda. So, if you have any concerns about that, please let myself and Scott know.
We'll put together a proposal for the council.
Is the thinking at this stage that we would do a work session, do a, or we just cancel?
No, I mean, no, I'm trying to maybe we just have three meetings a month, and the other three can all still be council meetings, we take action. But, we took last week off, and then in April, we took spring break off, and from a staff perspective, it's nice to be able to breathe for one week and actually get other things done that we have on our list of things to do, so in some ways that'd be beneficial to staff. And we don't want to shortchange the public or anything like that. And that's why I asked, you know, let's, let's give it a test run, and if we find out we're going to midnight, the other three nights that we're meeting, maybe we go back to it, but maybe try it out and see how it works.
So, if anyone's opposed, send us an email. All right. We're going to go into executive session, and before we do that, let's have a little bio break. Thanks.